If we're ready to begin, then as the Board Attorney, I'll start the meeting off. Again, my name is Ron Tropoli, Sony Board Attorney, and tonight is January 11th, 2021. So our seven o'clock reorganization meeting, a regular meeting, and I will turn it open. We'll ask Eileen for the opening statement, please.
Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, January 11th, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 10th, 2020, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Trittown News. Second, on December 29th, 2020, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 29th, 2020, said notice was posted in the office of the Zoning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the Board may legally consider in reaching their decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature when the Chairman opens the hearing up for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. The next item on the agenda is for the new member and returning members. What we will do this evening is we will ask both Mr. Nansen and Mr. Cantor, as soon to be sworn-in regular members, to take the oath first, and I assume that everybody has hopefully in front of them their oath. Mr. Cantor, do you have your oath? And Mr. Nansen. Perfect. Gentlemen, very good. If you would both raise your right hands, please, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Wendell Nansen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States and in this state.
Established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of people.
Under the authority of people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
That I will impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform.
Perform.
All the duties of the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
All the duties of the Zoning Board, office of the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mr. Cantor, Mr. Nansen, welcome, welcome back. And for the record, both Mr. Nansen and Mr. Cantor have been appointed as four-year regular members.
Correct.
And I would ask if you have the paperwork in front of you to please sign your oaths, and they can be transmitted to Eileen tomorrow, but you are duly sworn and eligible for tonight's meeting.
If not, I will be mailing you a copy, and you can just sign it and send it back to me.
Okay, fair enough.
Is a scanned version okay, or do you need a live signature?
Scanned is fine.
That would work. So next, Eileen will turn to Mr. Stanton. I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Again, you have your oath of allegiance in front of you to follow along. Thank you, sir. If you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, William Stanton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of people.
Under the authority of people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
That I will impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Perform all of the duties of Zoning Board of Adjustment.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And for the record, Mr. Stanton is alternate one, and that will be for a two-year term. And again, sir, you'll transmit the signed document, your oath of allegiance to the Administrative Secretary.
Yes, sir.
By scanner as soon as possible.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much, and again, welcome aboard and welcome back. Eileen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
Mr. Orozco?
Here.
Mr. Seiya?
Here.
Mr. Stanton?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Will everyone please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that brings us to the next part, which is the actual reorganization. And tonight, we will start with nominations for Chairman. Do we have a nomination on the floor for Chairman this evening?
I make a nomination that Wendell needs to be in for the Chairman.
I second.
Okay, second by Mr. Hughes. Are there any other nominations for Chair? Seeing none, Eileen, I'll call for a vote at this time.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
100% yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, congratulations. I'll turn the reins over to you at this point. Thank you.
Okay. I want to thank the fellow Board members here. We've been together for quite, quite some time now. You know, Mr. Stanton, welcome aboard. Look forward to serving with you on the Board. You know, a lot of the Board members have been here for quite a few years, and, you know, it's a pleasure to have their friendship. It's a pleasure to agree to disagree sometimes. And, you know, we've had a pretty good reign here, and I just, I do want to make one comment in one, well, thank one person, and that's Tom O'Donnell. He's been a longtime member on this Board, and he didn't get renewed, which is understandable, but, you know, he has been going through some health issues, but we're gonna miss his wisdom. We're gonna miss his thought behind the Board and a lot of his, the questions, good questions, especially questioning our professionals. I, we're gonna miss him, but, you know, welcome aboard, look forward to serving with, with you guys, and thank you for your trust.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank you for recognizing Tom. He's put a lot of good years in for the town, and I was gonna do the same thing, so I appreciate it, and I do send my thanks to Mr. O'Donnell for all his hard work over the years.
Yep, I agree. Okay, at this time, I'd like to have a nomination for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Paul Seiya, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Okay, is there any other nominations? Seeing none, do I have a second?
I second that.
Seconded by Moretti.
I'm there.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Absolutely.
Motion carries.
Paul and I started this venture many, many, many years ago. We were both appointed to the Board approximately the same time, and it's been a pleasure serving with you, Paul, and it's great to have you have my back. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome, Wendell. You know, Board members, I appreciate your confidence in me, and I certainly are looking to grow the bench, as they say. You know, and Mr. Stanton, you know, there is gonna be some online educational opportunities for you, that some of them, it's mandatory. There's a list, we'll get it to you. I know Eileen will work with you, and, you know, it's a, it's a venture when you're on the Zoning Board, sir, so I hope you enjoy it.
I look forward to it.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Welcome back. Okay, at this time, I'll take a nomination for the Secretary, Board Secretary.
I make a nomination for Rick Martins. He's been doing it for a number of years, and he shows great experience.
Thank you, Mr. Moretti. Is there any other nominations? Seeing none, can I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Welcome back, Rich. Sorry I didn't warn you that you were gonna do it again, or even ask if you wanted to, but.
Yeah, well, I want to thank everybody, and I also want to acknowledge Tom O'Donnell. Tom, he's been like a mentor to me all these years on the Board, and I'm gonna miss him. And Billy, welcome aboard. You got a good group of people here, and you're gonna learn a lot, and welcome aboard and looking forward to another year.
Thank you, sir. Okay, at this time, I would like a nomination for Consulting Attorney.
I'd like to make a nomination for Ron Tropoli, Mr. Chair, please.
Okay. Is there any other nominations? Seeing none, can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti. Eileen, could we have a roll call?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes, always.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Absolutely.
Motion carries.
I have never had another attorney on the Board other than Mr. Tropoli, and I'll tell you what, he has given this Board excellent advice. I know of no application, it's been appeal, even to the highest courts in New Jersey, it had been overturned on his resolutions. He advised the Board, he's taken up for the Board, and welcome back, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I deeply appreciate the vote of confidence you have in me. This begins my 22nd year.
Oh, my.
As your Zoning Board Attorney. It's been a wild ride, I have to say, but I look forward to working again with you, and always. And I appreciate the confidence you've had in me over the years, and again, thank you all very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Definitely welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, at this time, we'll take a nomination for Consulting Engineer.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate T and M Consulting.
Okay, I have a nomination of T and M. Do we have any further, any other nomination? Seeing none, can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti. And this is for Charlie, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Moretti?
There's no other way to go, but you have to vote yes. He's the man.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes, absolutely. I would love to say one thing. We lost, due to retirement, thank God, one of legendary engineers in Howell Township, Jack Mellon. I was kind of leery at first on who would be able to fill Mr. Mellon's shoes. As far as the in-depth, the history of Howell, it's not quite there yet, but he's, I'll tell you what, you filled some big, big shoes on this Board, and you have filled them immaculately.
Yes.
Very much appreciated, Charlie.
I think we all second that, Mr. Chair. We all second that one.
You're prepared. And I, I mean, it's the time you put into this, I want to thank you and welcome back, sir.
Mr. Chair, and the Board members, I'd like to just say thank you for your continued endorsement. Obviously, Jack was here for many years, I got a little ways to go, I got 19 more years to catch up to Ron, so hopefully, with all God's grace, I'll keep going and get there someday, so, thanks again, and I look forward to working with you all this year.
Thank you, sir. Okay, at this time, Consulting Planner, can I have a nomination for Consulting Planner?
I'd like to nominate Jen Bream.
Leon Avakian?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any other nominations? Seeing none, can I have a second?
I'll happily second that.
Who?
Mr. Hughes?
Mr. Hughes. Doesn't matter.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes, I made that nomination. She's her expertise, her tenacity to keep everything straight and make everybody know what their responsibilities are, there's no one better, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Jennifer, welcome back, and you know how I feel about you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
We missed you for that little sabbatical you took.
Yep.
And I tell you what, you know, it, your expertise as far as a planner and getting the job done is none other, you know, there's none other out there. And we really do thank you for all what you do for the Township of Howell. I mean, I know it's not just this Board, it's throughout Howell, and we thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Welcome back. Okay, this time, take a nomination for a Certified Tree Expert.
I'll nominate Sherri Sapiro, and I'm trying to think, was it CME?
CME, yes.
Correct, yes. CME, Sherri Sapiro. Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Again, welcome back, Sherri. You know, you've been a blessing to the Board with, with your expertise in, in the landscaping and trees and bushes and shrubs, you know, it, it's a breath of fresh air.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, Ms. Eileen?
Yes.
Do we even need to go, go here? Administrative Officer, I need a nomination.
I'd like to nominate Eileen Rabano, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, and I have a second, I'm not even asking for any of this. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Absolutely.
Motion carries.
Eileen, thank you very much for the hard work and dedication you have.
Especially in this year.
Yeah, it's really in a, also, I want to speak to counterpart right next to you, Matt. Without him either, you know, both of you guys, this Board could not function without you guys.
Right.
Really want to thank you guys, and I, I'm gonna say this again this year especially. When Barbara left, you had some big shoes to fill. Well, they're my little bitty shoes now. Actually, I think you done stepped over those shoes.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate the hard work you put in, and the hours you put in. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate all you guys coming to the meetings. I know it hasn't been easy for you guys either, so.
She's always available, when you want to call her about something, she's always available, doesn't matter when it is.
Yep.
She's amazing.
Great. Okay, Recording Secretary, can I get a nomination for that?
I'll make a nomination for Eileen Rabano, Mr. Chair.
Is there any other nominations? Eileen, you, you had an assistant helping you, do you want to have somebody else step in on the recording, or no?
There is nobody else. I'm in.
Yeah, okay. Can I have a second? Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. The Recording Secretary's been busy, you're gonna have a lot of minutes at your next meeting, so.
Well, you've had some, some time that you could get stuff done over the.
Yeah, two weeks.
Yeah. Hey, 2021 meeting dates, resolution, we, we've already voted there, correct?
We, we checked the dates, but we didn't vote on the resolution, so if we could just vote on the resolution.
I have a motion to accept the 2021 meeting dates.
Make a motion, Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Moretti?
No, Rick.
Rick? Okay, Rich Martin. Second, can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, the official newspaper, Eileen, will just go with what the Council.
Correct, and that's the Asbury Park Press, the Star Ledger, and the Trittown News.
Okay, got you. Okay, Site Review Committee, okay. Mr. Matt Hughes as Chairman, I would like to have Mr. Moretti and Mr. Cantor on that if Mr. Cantor is willing to do it.
With pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The Rules Committee is myself, Paul Seiya, and Rich Mertens. That's the Chair, the Vice Chair, and Matt. And this year, at the end of the year, we're gonna do it a little different, once we have our Rules Committee. Whenever we go to adopt the resolution for this, to memorialize it, we're gonna verbally put it on the record, you know, go through each step of the, the year-end report, and read it into the record. I, I tell you, it worked out really good this year, and I, you know, I, I think it opened the eyes to, to other Board members that really didn't know what the Rules Committee did. And I, I want to thank all the participants with that. And then also, Mr. Tropoli, I, I would like for you, Charlie, and Jen, and Sherri, you know, all get together and let's see, work out with Eileen and Matt, see if we could get a Zoom meeting with the Board members to where we could have sort of an educational, you know, type of deal where, where the Board members could ask you guys questions, like, you know, what's the differences between the Zoning Board and the Planning Board? What does the Zoning Board do, you know, versus what the Planning Board does? That way, everybody can differentiate, you know, they, they can ask their questions that they're confused about, and, you know, see if we could work something out with that that's possible. Also with, with land use, with Matt, you know, because a lot of the places that come to the Board, their, their summons is issued, they're actually, you know, being forced to come to the Zoning Board because they're not in compliance, or they're doing something wrong, and they're trying to make it right, so, you know, that'll help explain what the Board does, too, so.
We can do that.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I was looking down this list, but I did not see anything in reference to the Cake Chairman?
Yeah.
The Cake, C-A-K-E, Chairman.
Oh, the Cake Chairman.
I nominate Eileen Rabano.
I second that.
That's a good one, Jen.
Did, Eileen, did we lose somebody?
Uh.
Matt Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Matt.
He's back, hold on, we'll just get him back in the meeting.
Welcome back, all Board members. Well, we're waiting on Matt. There he is. Welcome back. Hopefully, we don't have meetings every week this year. I know it's probably pretty backed up right now, but, you know, we can get into a normal year this year, hopefully, get away from this COVID stuff, and, and we'll see, we'll And we'll see, we'll see how it goes. Have we heard anything about in-person meetings, when that's going to be, or?
Not anytime soon.
Next year.
Yeah. Okay, resolutions, case number BA 1831. Secundary Realty LLC, resolution granting use variance preliminary and final major site plan. Eligible voters Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, O'Donnell, Gonzalez, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hughes, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Mertens. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sir, can you just tell me who the eligible voters were again, please?
It's Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, O'Donnell, Gonzalez, Nansen.
Okay, I got them all then, all right. And the motion was Hughes and second was Mr. Moretti, correct?
Mertens.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Case number BA 20115, Howell Associates LLC. Resolution granting use variance preliminary and final major site plan. Eligible voters Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, O'Donnell, Orozco, Seiya, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mr. Hughes.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen. Motion carries.
Thank you. Case number BA 20104. Vesta 24 LLC, resolution granting use variance bulk variance preliminary major site plan. Eligible voters Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, O'Donnell, Orozco, Seiya, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. And we accept this?
Second.
Who who made the motion?
Moretti.
Moretti? Yes, seconded by Mr. Orozco, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Okay, thank you. Any minutes?
No minutes.
The vouchers?
No vouchers.
Correspondence?
No correspondence.
Wow. Okay, at at this time, we're going to kind of juggle the schedule here, the agenda here. We're going to take the last case on on the agenda. Is case number BA 20123, John Cornet- Cornetto Jr. This is a bulk variance application of John and Donna Coretta Jr. As applicant and owner seeking a bulk variance approval to construct a 556 square foot pavement patio in the rear yard in an ADA accessible front walkway with the ADA ramp and landscape walls requiring variance relief for exceeding 50% a maximum impervious coverage. Limit the premises known as block 10901, lots 169, 18 Festival Court. expiration date April 28, 2021.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Nansen, uh, you're supposed to swear in the professionals?
That's, that's okay. That's exactly where, that's where I was headed, thank you, Mr. Moretti.
You're welcome, you're welcome, Ron.
All right. All right, professionals, please raise your right hand. You swear that the testimony you give this evening be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so be God.
I do.
Very good, so tonight, we have Mr. Conliffe, Ms. Beam, Ms. Spiro, and Mr. Howard, all sworn for the evening, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moretti.
No problem.
Okay, uh, before we move into this case, I, you know, honestly, I don't know why we have the case. I do understand that it's over 50% of this, but due to the ADA accessible ramp, you know, I I really felt that the township should have handled this without coming to the board. But I I understand why they're here, and maybe Mr. Troply and Matt, this this might be a a good thing to put on our Rules Committee, you know, as far as dealing with ADA things. I'm not talking like having a swing set out in a farmland buffer. I'm talking about, you know, something that's functional for somebody that that, you know, for the ADA.
And I'll give you my standpoint, just as a zoning officer, the ordinance is 50% is the max. Anything that goes over, for whatever reason, um, I have to send them to the zoning board. I don't have the power or the legal authority to issue a permit for that. So I'll let Ron go into some of the specifics on it, but my understanding um, that those special reasons that might come up throughout the hearing are for the board to weigh in on, not me.
Right. I I understand why it's here. Thank you, Matt.
I mean, we could, right, we could certainly discuss it at the meeting at some other venue, but as of right now, the decision by the zoning official, of course, stands, and we do have to hear it. But again, Mr. Chair, your point's well taken, but uh, I think the board can probably dispose of this application relatively easily once the um, the required testimony is put on the record. Eileen, do we have the gentleman here tonight?
Yes, Mr. Cornetto's here on the meeting.
Yes, and real quick, Ron, I I want to bring Matt back in, real quick. Matt, smart buddy, again, you want to give us a quick rundown, and then I'll I'll turn it over to Charlie and Jen and let them cross-examine the applicant, and we can move this.
Yes, um, application was made to me for a rear pa- patio at the rear of the property. This zone for Equestria has a 50%, uh, 45% maximum impervious coverage uh, limit, and the application, when it was submitted, showed that was a in exceedance of that, and therefore, it triggered a bulk variance and a requirement to come to the zoning board.
Thank you, shall I swear the Mr. Cornetto in, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Cornetto?
Yes.
Yes, would you kindly raise your right hand? Swear the testimony you give this evening be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so be God.
I do.
Uh, your full name for the record, sir?
John Cornetto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, sworn.
Thank you, Mr. Cornetto, welcome, and, you know, my apologies that you have to come to the board for that. I I do understand why, and this is something that our Rules Committee will take up at the end of the year. You know, if if things come in like this again, maybe it could be handled administratively. But at this time, I'm going to go to Charlie real quick. Charlie, uh, you want to jump in and ask your questions real quick?
Yeah, so just to give the board more information, the applicant's proposing a 20-foot by 28-foot wide patio at the rear of the dwelling, it's approximately 556 square feet. I went and visited the site, took some site photographs, it looks like the existing entranceway at the rear has two steps. Uh, so obviously, to put a patio at grade, it looks like the applicant's looking to put in some type of um, ADA ramp to get out to the back of the patio there. The question I have for Mr. Cornetto is, what orientation is that ramp going to be? Is there going to be a a landing, and then it's going to turn and head left along the back of the of the dwelling? Or or what are you anticipating there?
No, it's it's going to be a removable ramp. It's going to be, um, I have a ramp in my garage, and I will be purchasing another ramp. Uh, it's a portable ramp um, that will go from the, you know, the landing, the sta- uh, the doorway down to the patio, no, um, you know, uh, platform, just straight down to the patio.
Uh, so it just comes straight out the back, right into the patio?
Yes.
Okay, so that's your reason for, obviously, um, you know, two steps, that's approximately, would you say it's about 14, 15 inches of a drop from your doorway to where the new patio is going to go?
Yes, yes.
So your your ramp itself, how how far is that going to come out the back of the building?
Well, according to the, according to the ADA ruling, the ramp has to be seven feet. Okay, my wife's scooter is five feet, so seven and five would be 12 feet. And it has a three, a three-foot radius, turning radius, that would bring it to 15. But that means soon she comes down the ramp, she's not going to be able to turn to get back on the ramp. She needs some leadway, so that's why I'm looking for the 20 feet. So it's seven plus five is 12, three for the turning is 15, and then maybe five feet that she can come off the ramp and make a complete turn to come back in.
Okay, so that's that's um, why it needs to be 20 feet off the back, because you're coming seven feet, and then you need another turning area off off the back of it. And and the ramp itself, it's not permanent, like you said, you you pretty much can reinstall it and take it out as you need it for your way to access the back there?
Yes, it's it's an aluminum made ramp, and it has holes where I can permanently, you know, just screw it in to the back door, okay? Uh, or it has a handle, it folds up in half, and you can take it, you know, from front to back to side.
Now, and then just for the board's perspective, so they know, so um, obviously, you could put in something more permanent with like a landing right outside the building that makes it turn left, but um, did you look into that? Is it a lot more costly than what you currently have?
It's it's a lot more costly, just because the landing, which um, is, I I believe the rules is 36 inches, right? Three feet for a landing. Uh, so you got to put not only the patio, now I got to build the landing, and then I got to build the ramp to come off into that landing. And we're talking, it is very expensive, okay? And um, with that is, it limits the amount of, you know, if I wanted to put a table with chairs, I mean, that's why you have a patio, so I can, you know, my wife can have some quality of life and basically be able to go out by herself and, you know, just enjoy this new house. And that's what we lacked this whole year. My wife has not been out of the house since June.
So, and then just to go further with that, so on the south end of the patio, you got a six-foot wide opening. So the intention is, the patio is going to be at grade, and you can freely walk? Or if you need to drive a scooter out of that opening, that would be the intent, right? There's no step down there, or what what's?
Well, I don't know if there's, you know, I don't know if there's going to be, you know, a partial step down, but in the back, so in other words, when I come out my back door, right, you're on your patio. If I just look out into what I'm going to call the woods, because we have, you know, common area and then a thing of woods, there'll be either, it'll be just level or one step down. I'm not anticipating my wife needs to go down. Uh, it's just there so I can get into the back to do whatever I need to do. So that's basically it. Uh, you know, I'm trying to see what kind of elevation of the patio would be, like if if, you know, if it's going to be flushed to the grass, or I'm going to have a little elevation up just to give it some height, and then it'll be like, like I said, a half a step or one step down.
Okay. Did you, did you have anyone look at putting at the possibility of putting the patio so it's elevated? So it's at the same grade as your your exit coming out of there?
Yes, I have, uh, again, that's costly, because now they have to raise the, uh, you know, the grading. So they have to raise it, and that's, you know, more material, um, so it becomes, you know, an expense issue then.
Okay, and then it's more steps potentially off the back there, so it's it's, there's no, makes it more difficult to to just have an at-grade opening where your wife could potentially, you know, wheel out of there if 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 you're able to make it work. And then, and then the front, so there's an existing covered concrete uh, walkway out there. It it looks like there's a re- uh, no, replace existing walkway with pavers. Is there a ramp proposed there also, just kind of get more information on what's going on there?
Well, basically, with the front door, there's about a six, maybe a six to eight inch lip from the front door to the existing porch. Okay, so when you put the pat- the paver blocks on top, okay, you're going to have, you know, maybe an inch or two. So I I don't think you need a ramp, uh, but if so, again, is I will be purchasing a, you know, a ramp. And again, a a mobile ramp, uh, you know, removable that I can screw down to make it more permanent, so it doesn't move, but uh, my understanding from the paving company is that they can re- they can only raise it so much, because you can't be flush, because if it rains or snows, then you got to worry about, you know, flooding the house. So they will do, you know, they know that this is a handicap uh, situation, and that they will do in their best powers to accommodate whatever I need to have happen.
So so would you say, and I I just want to make sure for the record, because you you are asking for relief for exceeding the impervious coverage, so were they pretty confident they're going to be able to stay within the exact footprint? You know, that's that's there now, I just, I don't want you to come for something, get a NASDAQ survey after it's constructed, and then have to come back to the board because they needed to go, you know, one course a block here and there. Um, are they pretty confident they can stay with what's what's there within the limits?
So we're talking about the front now, right?
Yep.
About the porch, yeah, they'll just cover the porch, uh, they, it won't be extended. The only thing in my plan is having what they call um, a landscaping wall, okay? And that's just a, you know, wall going around the existing uh, footprint of my landscape, okay? And uh, you know, that's everybody in my neighborhood. I just wanted to correct um, something that was said. I'm not in Equestria, and this is not 45%. I am in Monmouth Woods in Howell, and my understanding it's 50%. So just wanted to correct that gentleman, because he did mention Equestria.
That was my mistake, sorry about that.
Okay. So a- again, is, um, you know, the front will be just overlaid to the current patio with pavers. Okay, so that's going to raise whatever a paver is, I don't know if it's six inches or seven inches, whatever the patio block is, that's just going to be right up to the doorway. And, you know, of course, there's going to be, you know, a couple of inches below the door, just so that if it snows or rains, you know, so it'll be up to code as far as the paving company is concerned. They won't do it flush.
So that's really all I have for uh, Mr. Cornetto, Mr. Chair. Um, obviously, the front, I I just wanted to get it on the record, and and, you know, obviously, the applicant's going to be required to get NASDAQ survey once everything's put and installed, just to confirm everything. Um, the the one question that I I are suggesting that I have the board, obviously, they're asking for relief with the impervious coverage, you know, typically, we would require the applicant to provide dryables or a rain garden. You know, it's 50% in the zone, and they're at 3.5% over that. I mean, it equates to 250 square feet. You know, it's really up to the board whether or not, you know, they they think anything is required. Um, what I will say is, there's a lot of properties in this development, you know, if you grant a lot of these, then there's potential that it starts to add up, but I mean, for one standalone application, I don't know that it it makes a wholesale difference.
Okay, Charlie, thank you, Jennifer.
So I just have a couple of questions. So the first is, is that the purpose associated with the application is to promote the health, safety, and general welfare, correct?
That's correct.
And in your opinion, does this have a negative impact on your neighbors?
Actually, I have my two next-door neighbors, one sitting next to me and one on the other. They're both have patios, uh, which is about a foot less than what I'm asking for, and they have no issues whatsoever. I mean, you could talk to them, one is.
No, I believe you, so I just want you to say no, honestly.
No, okay.
And then the last, the the last question is, do you think this has a negative impact on the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance?
No.
Okay, I have no further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to open the public.
I'll make a motion, public.
Who who got the motion?
Mertens.
Mertens, do I have a second?
I'll second it, sir.
Okay, you have a second? Motion by Mr. Mertens, seconded by Mr. Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, at this time, we'll open to public for questions or comments.
If there are any members of the public that wish to speak on this application or ask questions, please use the raise your hand feature. You will need to be sworn in and give your name and address, and you also need audio and video.
Eileen, I have Tom Curdie next to me, so if he can go first?
Is Tom here?
I'm right here, can you see me? Okay. Shall I spell my last name for you?
Hold on one second, you have to be sworn in by our board attorney first.
Very good.
Ron, you're you're muted.
I'm muted?
I got, no, I'm I'm good now. Okay, uh, please raise your right hand, sir. You swear the testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so be God.
Yes.
Yes, sir, and can we have your full name? You may put your hand down, thank you. Your full name and your address, please.
Uh, Thomas Curdie, that's K-I-R-D is in David, A-H-Y. And I'm located at 20 Festival Court in Howell, and that's also in Monmouth Woods.
Okay.
Okay, uh, normally, this is just for questions, Mr. Chair, but perhaps we could just wrap it all up in one.
Both questions and comments.
Very good, sir. Go ahead, sir.
I'm John's wingman in this process, and watching him go through this uh, uh, for about six months now, and uh, actually gratified that the board has recognized this is an extenuating circumstance, and probably for somebody that has to go through this in the future, you know, they won't have, they won't be so cumbersome. But uh, as John's neighbor next door, this is not going to be, I don't know of any neighbor that would, uh, you know, have anything negative to say regarding John's needs.
Okay, sir. Is there anyone else from the public which to make a, ask a question or state a, make a comment?
Hold on, we do have someone, one second. We had Larry with his hand raised. Larry, if you're there? Can you please turn on your audio and video?
Eileen, he might be.
All right, I'm unmuted, uh, I think I'm unmuted?
Yes.
Yes.
Start video, because you don't see me, right?
Right, just click start video.
Huh? Oh, boy. Okay, can you see me and can you hear me?
We can hear you, we can't see you. We, we can hear you. We can't see you.
Oh, well, that's probably a good thing for you. Um, hmm. Larry, is your camera covered?
Yeah, it might be a cut, a slide to camera cover.
Well, I don't know where that would be.
Hey Larry, Larry, on your, on your box, there should be three dots at the top. If you click on it, it'll say, uh, show video or stop video. Do you see those three dots?
Uh, all I see is view. Um, wait, view the full screen? No, speaker view.
Actually I think his camera's on. I think it's covered because his name went down to the bottom of the box.
Yeah, all of a sudden, as soon as I hit raise my hand, that's when everything went blank. And, um, because you probably saw me before, didn't you, while the meeting was going on?
No. Oh, we do, we only have your names. Mr. Tropoli, if he's only commenting and not testifying, is that okay?
Yeah, that's all I'm going to do is I want to comment.
Well, let me, Larry, before we go forward, you know, uh, take it on faith that you're going to raise your right hand when I give you the- Okay? So we'll start with that and then you can put your name on the record. Do, do you swear that the testimony you'll give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Go ahead, Larry. What's your full name, please?
Okay, my name is Larry Karaselli, C A R O S as in Sam, E L L I.
Okay, and your address, please?
16 Festival Court, and that is in Howell. And we're on the other side of, uh, John and Donna's house. Uh, the other side of, you know, where Tom is, Tom and Jeanie. But, um, we also want to state our, um, comply, we, we want to show our support for this variance and we have no objection whatsoever to them having the, uh, extended patio. So, yeah, we just want you to know that and we have no problem with it whatsoever.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the public?
I don't see anyone with their hands raised.
Okay, at this time I'll take a motion to close public portion.
I'll make a motion to close, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mr. Hughes.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, uh, Charlie. Do you want to do a, a quick summation for them real quick? Hey, um, what we're doing, the variances?
Yeah, so, uh, Mr. Chair, the only variance that's being sought is, uh, exceeding the impervious coverage. 50% is, uh, maximum allowed in the zone. The applicant's at three, uh, 53.5%, that's approximately 250 square feet. Um, as you heard the applicant say, uh, obviously the need for the, uh, exceedance is, is a result of the patio in the rear, uh, which is enlarged above what's permitted in the zone for the ADA access for, for the applicant's wife. Um, to, you know, be able to freely navigate and use that patio in the back. Um, I take no objection to the application. I think the 250 square feet is, you know, minimal for, for what's being proposed. Um, the only requirement, obviously, like I said, is the condition of approval of the applicant. Once everything's constructed, we'll just need an Asbeld survey to close out any permits with the township. But other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. John, do you have any issue with that, what, what our professional just stated?
No.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cantor.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the variance as requested.
Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that, Mr. Chair.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Application's approved.
Good, good luck, Mr. Cornetto.
Thank you, board. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, well done. And Eileen, thanks for your help.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, at this time, uh, we're going to take a five minute break. Let everybody stretch their legs for a second.
You hear that, Matt? Yeah, Rich.
The board's going to take a five minute recess. They'll be back at 8:08. Does any board will now reconvene?
Everybody back?
Uh, no, give us a minute.
Charlie? Did you move? Your office is a little bare, more bare than it was last time.
I am in the one bedroom in the apartment that is not completely gutted, uh, so.
But I didn't hear a train yet.
It was going back and forth for the last like 20 minutes. I'm surprised, you know, and I had it muted when, conveniently when they passed by.
Okay.
Mr. Orozco?
The zoning board meeting will now reconvene. Do you see Orozco anywhere?
I'm here.
Yes, okay.
We don't-
I'm here.
Next application before the board, case number VA 20102. Michael Rifkin and Sandra Brazzi. Use variance and bulk variance. Application of Michael Rifkin and Sandra Brazzi. His applicant owner seeking a use variance, bulk variance approval to construct a total of 1,489 square foot addition to the existing two-story, single-family dwelling, which included a new covered porch, patio extension at the rear of dwelling and a, a new covered porch at the front of the dwelling. The applicant also proposes additions to the north side of the dwelling, including a two-story addition to serve as a powder room, mudroom, pantry on the first floor with the newly configured staircase up to the second floor, where a new bathroom is proposed. The application also proposing a breezeway connecting the single-family dwelling to existing carriage house on premises known as block 168 lot 20366 Fairfield Road. This application was originally scheduled to be hired December 14th, 2020, when it was carried to January 11th, 2021 with no further notice. Expiration date, March 5th, 2021.
You let Todd in?
Mr. Cohen, is this your case? You're muted.
How's that?
There you go. Welcome, sir. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, all professionals. My name is Todd Cohen. I'm the attorney for the applicants, Michael Rafkin, Sandra Brazzi. Um, this application before the board tonight is a D2 variance with a couple of bulk variances for an expansion of a non-conforming use. It's basically an addition to a residence in the SED zone. It's an existing house at 366 Fairfield Road. It's been there since the 50s. There's been two previous additions to the home, both a result of prior variances. One issued in 1982 and one issued in 2003. The present application calls for 489 square foot addition to the home and a breezeway to connect the main residence to an existing carriage house. We also have some environmental issues that were raised by Charlie in his letter. And our professionals are here this evening and prepared to address, uh, those concerns. Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is I have the applicant, uh, Sandra's going to testify on behalf of the applicant. I have Highland Turner, our architect, who has a brief presentation on the architectural aspects of the presentation. I have Brian DeBois from DeBois Associates, who will address the environmental issues and the applications. My client has made the DEP. And to close, we have Christine Caphone, who will conclude with our planning testimony.
Let's bring all of your witnesses in. And Ron, if you want, we could swear everybody at once.
Soon as they're all in.
I see the applicants in.
Looks like everybody's coming in now.
I think they're all-
They're blinking on, yep. And Brian, we need him to put his camera on.
And Mr. Turner as well.
Correct. All right, and we're just waiting for Mr. Turner.
We're trying.
All right, I think we have everyone now. Folks, would you please raise your right hand? Swear the testimony you give this evening will be the truth, the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Okay, starting with Ms. Brazzi, could you please say your name?
Sandra Brazzi.
Thank you. And Christine?
Hi, good evening, Christine Caphone.
Okay, uh, Brian?
Brian DeBois, DeBois and Associates.
And, uh, Mr. Turner?
Highland Turner.
Thank you all sworn for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, if it's okay to start, I'm going to begin with the applicant and put some testimony on the record with regard to the purpose of the application and the history of the structures on the property. Okay, Sandra, you there?
Yes.
Okay. Sandra, um, you are the owner, along with your husband, Michael, of 366 Fairfield Road, is that correct?
Yes.
And you purchased the property in August of 2018, is that correct?
Yes.
And at that time of your closing, there was no certificate of occupancy required in Howell Township, is that correct?
That's correct.
And when you closed, though, there were no open permits on the property?
There were none. They're correct. There were none.
And when you purchased the property in 2018, all of the structures that are shown on the plot plan that we submitted, uh, are, were, were on the property today. We're there when you purchased the property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you're now looking to put an addition on the home. And could you explain the purpose of the addition, please?
It's basically to update the house. The house is quite old. Um, it doesn't really serve our family's needs. The house is just old. The rooms are really small. It doesn't really have the functionality that we hope to have. We have kids and we just want to make it our own.
And what is your long-term plan for the property and the house?
To move into the house and to raise our kids there.
And you're aware there were two previous applications before this board, also for small expansions to the existing non-conforming residents. One was in 1982 and one was in 2003, is that correct?
Yes.
And as far as you know, those additions were in fact constructed, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And as far as the other structures on the property, uh, what you call the carriage house to the right of your home, if you're facing the property, uh, to the best of your knowledge, that was originally constructed as a barn back in the 70s, correct?
Correct.
And then it was converted to what you now call the carriage house sometime in the late 90s, early 2000s by the prior owner. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And what is the carriage house presently used for?
We use it mostly for family gatherings, which isn't that often, but that's the purpose of it. It has a really nice, great room in there and that's where we use to celebrate holidays and have our family gatherings.
Okay, and one of the purposes, which our architect will, uh, explain a little more in detail, is you want to make that carriage house part of your existing residence, is that correct?
Yes.
And that'll be, um, the reason for the breezeway addition that we're proposing, is that correct?
Right, right. Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, there's also a greenhouse on the property.
Yes.
Located behind the barn.
Yes.
From base, and that we can have determined from historic aerials, that's been there since the late 70s, early 80s as well, is that correct?
Correct.
And presently it is not being used, is that true?
It's not.
And there's no intent for any commercial use of that structure?
Oh, absolutely not.
Okay, and what would you eventually want to do there?
We want to grow our own vegetables and herbs and have access to it all year round. We can't certainly plant everything outside, so we can farm all of our own stuff for our own use indoors.
Okay. And the, um, garage that's located behind the greenhouse, uh, that's presently vacant, is that correct?
Right, it is.
That's just you, will be used for the storage of firewood as far as you know, correct?
That's what we're using it for now. Yeah, that's what we have it for.
And the other structure on the property is the pool and poolhouse. Um, to the best of your knowledge, the pool's been there since 1979, is that correct?
Correct.
And sometime after that, they added the cabana, but that was done by the prior owner.
Correct.
Um, I believe we submitted a letter to the board regarding a neighbor and having, uh, a structure over the line. You just briefly had lib on that, explain that to the board.
Are you speaking to me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we asked our neighbor because according to the survey, unbeknownst to us, the little, um, I'll call it little tree stand or hunting stand is somewhat on his property. We reached out to him and he had absolutely no objection to it staying there. He was quite aware of it because the prior owner had, he let him know that it was there. And he sent a letter in and saying he had no objection to it staying there or anything else to be on his property.
Okay. And there was, um, one other, but, I'm sorry.
That's listed as a seven on your exhibit list.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
And finally, there was a question, um, from one of the professionals regarding the adequacy of parking on site. Uh, did you just put on the record the fact that, uh, there is adequate parking for your personal use?
There's substantial, there's substantial parking. I mean, my husband and I, we have, between us, we have three cars. You can honestly fit 20 to park there. There's quite a substantial amount of room.
Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony. Um, I have nothing further of the applicant. If there's any questions, um-
Yeah, Todd.
Take them at this time.
Todd, on the cabana, it is, was there any permits pulled on that or?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Mr. Jim.
On the cabana?
Yes.
It, was there any permits pulled for the construction of the cabana or do you know?
My client did a, uh, Oprah request. We did research the previous permits that were pulled for the property. We did not find anything related to cabana, no.
Charlie, real quick, uh, just, just to bring everything into compliance, um, would that cabana require permits?
I think that's really a question for, uh, Mr. Howard. Um, the cabana ordinance didn't come into place until I believe within the last year and a half, two years. So if this was constructed before then, I don't know that there, there was any restrictions on, that you couldn't have a cabana. Um, it really would be treated like as an accessory structure. And then as far as, um, you know, whatever building permits would be required from, from the code, uh, building department. I think Matt can, can provide some info on that.
Yeah, you're pretty much right, Charlie. Um, before the ordinance was in effect, that, uh, what the ordinance is, is pretty much what our policy was. So before that, we would have just treated it as an accessory structure and looked at it with the normal setbacks for that.
Okay. What? Matt, were, were any building permits pulled for that or not?
Locate any.
Okay. What do we need to do to bring that into compliance?
Well, if the variance is, is given tonight for the location, then we would, uh, just ask for a permit application to follow up with, uh, probably as one package with everything else that's going to be submitted as part of this, uh, application, once they come for permits.
Okay, Todd?
We, Mr.- Mr. Nansen?
Yes.
They're going to have to tell us the height of those structures because the ordinance requires an accessory structure to be set back twice the height. And the cabana is about 20.9- and the cabana is about twenty point nine feet from that property line there, so it, you know, as long as it's, so if it's ten feet or less, obviously it's conforming, but if it's over ten feet, they're gonna need relief for it, so I'm assuming, Todd, that your architect has the information on the height of all those accessory structures, you know, in my letter.
I hope so.
Okay.
Okay. Todd, just to clarify too, you said the pool has been there since the late seventies, early eighties, right, in the, in the associated pool house?
Yes, there's a, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so there's permits for the pool house, and that's in the location and it hasn't changed, right, it's just like a banner we're talking about.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, Mr.?
The pool shows on a 1979 aerial drawing, so it's been a long.
Okay. So, and then one, just quick question, and it's, you know, if you had an engineer, it'd be an engineering question though too, but the proposed patio extension at the southwest corner of the house kind of overlaps with the asphalt driveway that goes around the rear of the structure? Is the applicant proposing to relocate a portion of that driveway, so they got circulation, or?
I don't know that they had planned to do that. Mike or Sandra, if you guys want to chime in, please feel free, I, I don't, or Highland, I don't know if that was part of the
Oh, something happened here.
Share the screen.
You talking about where the nineteen point three is there?
Yeah, that dimension overlaps with the existing asphalt driveway, so that back addition there for the patio.
That is correct.
So, are we discontinuing the driveway, are we gonna relocate it? If it is gonna be relocated, I just want to make sure it gets shown on the plan. Obviously, the impervious coverage goes up, what I will say for the board, this is in the SED zone where the maximum impervious coverage is at seventy percent. You know, they're well under that, so it doesn't really impact the coverage, just for clarity sake.
I mean, if, if you want me to answer, our intent is to just discontinue it.
Well, if that's your intent, then we could make that a condition if the board saw it fit to approve it, and that solves the problem.
I don't think the board has issue with the driveway being relocated, Todd, I just want to get it on the record, so if, you know, something changes on the plans after the fact, it's something the board considered.
Would it be relocated, or just they wouldn't use that side?
Well, yeah, they could discontinue it, and it's really just a head-on driveway, and then they gotta back out, you know, you know, potentially back out on the Fairfield Road. My suggestion would be to relocate the thing, so you have the continuous turnaround, right?
Yeah. Can I just jump in, guys, there's a third driveway, we wouldn't be backing out ever, that would be really unsafe. We have a third driveway that we would be coming out of.
Charlie, can you put that plan back up, so we can see it?
Yeah, I think that was Matt.
Oh, sorry, thanks, Matt.
What, what I'm getting at is, I just want to make sure if the applicant ever has a anticipation to use that in the future, I don't think the board has an issue with you relocating the driveway, so you can still pull in and out of there.
Okay.
Don't, don't hamper yourself if the board doesn't have an issue with it.
Like even if you don't plan on using it, I, you're here, you've spent the money to come here, and the board, you know, doesn't seem to be voicing a lot of objections, I don't want to speak for them. So don't cut yourself off, if you, if, I would represent now, my recommendation would be to say you're gonna relocate it, if you don't want to use it, you don't have to use it, but if you said you're gonna discontinue it, and then you want to put it back, then you're gonna have to come back, so.
I, I understand.
Do that.
I, I would say we would relocate it then, because until we get going, we wouldn't really know, so I would say relocate it.
Never back out on that road.
No.
So, and then Todd, just to clarify, so right now, it's showing us two structures, the, the dwelling and the carriage house, it's gonna have a shared roof line with the breezeway, so it's all gonna become one principal structure, correct?
Correct.
So you only use variance as the D2 for the expansion of this non-conforming residential, right?
Correct.
All right, and then as far as the carriage house, the applicant's gonna get any required permits, anything after the fact that's required from the township? Building and, and otherwise for the internals?
Yes, as, as they, as they go forward, they would get the required permits, yeah.
That is all I have at the moment, Mr. Chair.
Jennifer?
I don't really have any questions for the applicant, um, I have some questions for the architect, and then of course, the planner, so. I'll wait till then.
Todd, want to call you next witness?
Yes, Mr. Turner, you there, Highland?
Yes, I am, sir.
Highland, you've previously been sworn, would you put your professional and educational qualifications on the record as a professional architect, please?
Absolutely, first I'd like to say to you that I'm a third-generation architect. I have been practicing architecture for the last forty years on a variety of venues, from Boston to New York to New Jersey. I have nearly thirty years of residential experience in the great state of New Jersey, and have maintained an office here during that period of time. We've specialized in high-end residential work and additions and rehabs, not only to very simple residences, but also to residences of historic importance. During that period of time and my tenure as architect, I have appeared well beyond a hundred Board of Adjustment meetings, as well as planning meetings throughout the state, and many states along the East Coast. And first point of registration in the state of New Jersey was 1991. I'm a fully credited architect. I see great passion in the type of work that we do and the integrity of that work. I, and I would hope that that would qualify me as an expert wish, witness in this case.
Education?
Yes, Cornell University.
Cornell, okay. We accept your credentials, sir.
Go Big Red, so I like him already.
All right, there you go, we got a fan, there's one, there's one everywhere, you'd be surprised. Todd, how do, I, I'd like to, after that introduction, it's been a long road for all of us to get here, and I appreciate Mrs. Urbano's abilities to pull this all together, and my condolences to the owner because of the amount of time, energy, and, and efforts they've made to get us in a position before you and to hear this case. The first thing I'd like to do, if you're not familiar with the package that we had sent you, is sort of give you an overlay of how I'd like to present the drawings to you, so you have a full understanding of what the architectural aspects were, the amount of square footage with plans, and what the architectural intent of the design is and will be. The first part of that, not, ladies and gentlemen, I'm not sure what documents you have in front of you, but I've sequestered a associate of mine who is a fairly well-versed tactical individual to help me sort of go through the drawings with you, and I'll be able to sort of pull those up on the screen and share those with you as a slideshow to get you familiar with not only the site, the building, and the drawings that were completed. If you have those drawings and are well acquainted with them, I'll certainly bypass this, and just get into the information that you have received.
Why don't you just pull up the drawings that you want to present, and then we'll go from there?
All right.
Are these gonna be the plans that, that was submitted with the application?
That, that is correct. That is correct.
But I don't have pictures.
Well, they, they were originally submitted, but I'm gonna go through this to show the board how the existing building currently sits on the site and what the characteristics of it are. The first.
Are these photos already marked?
No.
Hey, we're, we're gonna have to mark these photos.
We don't have any of these photos.
Highland, can we just use the architecturals that we submitted?
Yes, we, we certainly can. We certainly can. Let's go to the, the elevations.
Give the board just a brief overview of everything, I think they'd be okay with that.
Okay, very good. So.
Please, please identify the drawings for what they're.
Yes, the, these drawings were produced by me and my firm, and this is not showing the, the correct, the correct drawing. So, do you, do you guys have the, the drawings in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
We just need to make sure that they are marked into exhibits.
Exactly, all right, let's, let's, let's first, the, the elevations are shown on A03. There are two elevations on that sheet, front elevation and side elevation. A04 is the rear elevation. Those are the elevations that have been amended in some form. The, the, the other side of the, of the building has not been touched, so to speak.
Now, these renderings, now, the, the elevations, are they showing the additions?
Yes, they are.
Okay, that, that's, this is the new additions.
That, that is correct, they're, they're shown in rendering format as a presentation drawing, so I'd be delighted to go over that with you from A03. Front elevation is showing a, an extended front porch designed in keeping what I, with what I feel is a, if I can use the word, a Victorian type of covered porch with access from the second floor, we gotta get rid of this slide, because it's not very. That is the extent of what you're seeing on the front elevation. The next elevation, which is known as side, you're, you're approaching the building from the front and going to the right of the building. This is hold on. This is, this is the slide right here. This known as side elevation is, and you, you have to forgive us, something happened graphically for the, the work that's on the screen currently. This shows the side of the elevation and the connection and the infill, which is the larger gable that you see, with the chimney protruding, which is an existing chimney in the background, and then the breezeway that is shown in section showing the, the entry to the new mudroom to the right. To the right of that is the extension of the, the portico and the existing family room that is currently in the building.
Real quick, let me, let me stop you right there. Let's, let's move, let's skip this and move, move ahead forward, I don't think we have issues with, with, with the design structure here with, with the house.
Okay, very good.
We need
Okay, very good.
To, to get to the points, like, like the carriage house, the connection of the breezeway through there, how that's gonna affect any type of variances, the, the cabana, you know, that, that type of stuff is what we need to address. As far as architectural and stuff, the, the board really, it, it's not a commercial building, and it's not gonna meet certain criteria with the board under our commercial ordinances. So, you know, the, the architect, as beautiful as it is, as much as I would like to go through it, we, we really don't need to spend a lot of time with that.
Wendell, I'm fine with that, and I appreciate the guidance on this.
Okay, Jennifer, do you agree?
I wholeheartedly agree.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
You have some questions, the architect, as far as height and?
Yeah, I really just, do you know what the height of the cabana is?
Jennifer, we have never surveyed that building at this point, so I cannot tell you exactly what it is. I can only guess that is probably around sixteen, seventeen feet from the ground plane to the top of the ridge.
So, Todd, to that end, I would just request that when, or Christine, when you testify, just touch on the fact that that cabana would need a side yard setback variance, even if, you know, even if you say fifteen, sixteen feet to the ridge, then it would need to be thirty feet off the property line, and it's about twenty-one feet, so I would just be safe and request the relief, that's all.
Agreed. Completely agreed. All right, I, I think we'll, we'll jump over to the connection of what is referred to as the breezeway in relationship to the existing barn structures to the right of, of that area from the front part of the property. This was done with architectonic concepts of attempting to unify the composition of the buildings in total on that site. To me, they also defined the rear of the building, which is more private, from more of the pedestrian access from the road, but those are the architectonic aspects that I am suggesting, the breezeway also suffices as a, as a way to get from the garage into the house in inclement weather. It also provides shelter over the side entry, so it's, it's doing a couple of multiple purposes in relationship to, you know, its, its aspects of how it functions for the, the family, as well as trying to unify these principally two different buildings into a unified whole. That was what was on my mind in relationship to the principles of using this breezeway to connect those. The existing garage that you see as a portion on the plans is currently used as, this portion of the building is currently used as garages. There are other portions of the building in the back that contain of, of an unusual sort of spaces or rooms, which I'm assuming that whoever, who was ever the previous client was using as, they, they look like areas to, for, for planting and, you know, setting pots and a variety of other things, or Lord knows, he may have sold things, I don't know.
Now, is, is the applicant looking to do any commercial type of business on this site?
No, not, not whatsoever.
Okay.
Not whatsoever.
Charlie, I'm gonna bring you in, what are your concerns?
So, the only question I have for the architect, and I know he didn't put together the site plan, but, um, the breezeway, what's going on underneath there? Is there existing concrete or slate walkway, are they proposing one, what's, what's going on?
Under, under that breezeway is the continuance of the driveway that was previously there, Charles. We are only sheltering it and connecting the existing building to the, to the barn.
So, is a car gonna be able to still pull right underneath that?
Yes, it will, yes.
All right, and then, I know on, on the plot plan, and I know you didn't put that together, but there, there was an indication that there were some additional slate walk proposed, are you aware of where exactly that may be going? Todd, if that's something that the applicant might want to just clarify for the board?
Yeah, we, we were, Todd and I were both looking at that previously about last month sometime, and I think we gotta blow this thing up, so we know where it is. That's it. Okay, see this right now, the, the areas that are, that I could find that are designated as slate walkways in any kind, Charles, seem to be indicating existing areas. Even the front walkway is existing there, as well as the one in the back that you can barely read the, the term that says slate over there, just behind the, the rear driveway area next to the two-story frame barn. That also indicates slate, but as far as I know, that is not new, that is existing.
Okay, there was just a discrepancy on the plans, Mr. Chair, is about a hundred square feet, what I would say is, they're well under the impervious coverage zone. As long as it's slate sidewalk in the vicinity of existing, just to improve access between the two buildings, I, I have no issue with it. As far as architecturals, my only question was the driveway and how that worked with the patio, that's since been resolved. The bulk of my questions are, are just really for Mr. DuBois regarding the stuff at the rear of the site with the environments and stuff. regarding the stuff at the rear of the site with the environments and stuff.
Is?
Any questions of the architect at this time?
Okay, is, is there any questions from the board members of the architect or the applicant? Can we get the, can we get our board screen back?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Hughes.
No questions at this time, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stanton?
No questions, sir.
Mr. Moretti?
No questions at this time.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No questions or comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Cantor?
No questions.
Mr. Seiya?
No questions at this time, sir.
Mr. Martin?
I'm good at this time, too.
Mr. Roscoe?
I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay. Todd?
Excuse me, Mr.? To move this along, I'd like to call Brian DeBois from, uh, DeBois Environmental.
I heard somebody's going to say something.
Wasn't me.
I think it was Eileen trying to say something.
I, I want Mr. Orosko to put his video on so he's in the meeting.
Yeah.
You have to stay on video or I can't let you vote.
Oh, yeah.
Jose?
Yep.
Turn your video on.
Hey, Todd?
Yeah, you have to stay.
Okay.
You have to stay in the meeting, Jose.
I'm here, bud.
Okay. Okay. Yes, sir. Mr.?
Brian, you've previously been sworn. Uh, would you please put your qualifications as an environmental scientist on the record?
Yeah, I have, uh, um, a Bachelor of Science of Biology and Ecology from Westchester University in nineteen ninety-three. I have over twenty-five years' experience, um, in the environmental field. Um, I'm a professional wetland scientist, um, certified by the Ecological Society of America. I'm a, I've been appointed by three governors to the Wetland Mitigation Council, and I'm currently serving my third or fourth term on that council.
You accept your credentials, Mr. DeBois?
Uh, can I just jump in? I wanna preface it and I think it'll speed things along real quickly.
Go right ahead.
So, Mr. Chair, just to give the board reference, this property is immediately to the south of the Rock Solid Realty property that was before the board at the end of last year that was approved. Uh, along the west part of the site in the rear, the Ordina Brook passes through this property. Uh, the Haltasha ordinance requires a hundred-foot stream corridor and an additional hundred-foot stream corridor buffer from the center line of, of that, that water body. Um, the applicant isn't proposing any improvements with this application at the rear of the site. Um, this is a property that's been added to by the prior owner over the years. Uh, you know, I asked Mr. Cohen and the applicant to look into these environmental things to bring the, the, the site into conformance. The applicant purchased the property as is with a lot of these things on here. I think they're doing their due diligence to make sure that, you know, should they get approvals from the board, they sell the property in the future, the next buyer can have some peace of mind knowing that whatever's on the site has gotten all approval, proven approvals from the township and DEP. So, um, there's a garage on the north of the property line that's very close within, I think, the outer hundred, fi- a hundred-foot stream corridor buffer. There's also the, um, cabana, which is in the proximity of that. Really just wanted Mr. DeBois to look into the wetlands, the delineation, any buffers, the flood hazard area, and whether or not any permits are required for anything after the fact that's there. So at that, I'll let Brian jump in.
Yeah, I delineated the wetlands, um, and today we got the letter of interpretation, which I'm sure you guys will get a copy of. Um, it states that there's a fifty-foot wetland buffer for the resource classification. Um, there's, there's no wetland issues on this property. So, so that's, that's it with that. Um, with the flood hazard, um, regulations, we also applied to the DEP for, um, an applicability, um, determination from them, and we're still waiting on, on those folks. But, um, the worst it could be, uh, would be a hundred and fifty foot. Um, if they, if they decided this area drained more than fifty acres, the worst it could be would be a hundred and fifty foot buffer, um, from the, um, water body. Um, and we, we have, you know, I'm, I'm not familiar with the, um, with exactly what buildings are what, but it sounds like from the cabana on the map that was shown, um, we have a hundred and, and, let me just make sure, a hundred and fifty-eight feet at its closest point, um, that would be to the south side of the property. And to the north side, there's a garage, um, and the distance there would be a hundred and thirty feet.
Yeah.
So if the DEP comes back with the applicability, and I suppose a hundred and fifty foot determination, then at some point, um, you know, this, the other part is a lot of these, um, structures were built prior to two thousand and seven when the flood hazard rules came into effect. So, we may need a, 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 a very, you know, a permit by certification for the garage that's in the north side of the property.
This one.
But it may be likely that we don't, we don't, we're not required to get anything, um, from its, from a state standpoint.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, what I'll leave it is, um, as far as Mr. DeBois said, the only thing that was, would be within a hundred and fifty foot is the garage along the north side of the property. And the applicant agrees, they get any permit after the fact, it wouldn't be required by NJDEP. The cabana's outside a hundred and fifty feet. Um, it is within the township, the hundred-foot additional stream corridor buffer. Um, having said that, the board has granted relief of that. Um, this is something that's been there for some time. Um, they're before the board here to get it approved as far as the setbacks. As long as it's not within the hundred and fifty foot, I, I don't take an issue to it. Really, I just wanted to get on the record that they're in a process with DEP, trying to make everything right that's conforming there. You know, anything that's a temporary structure, Brian, that's not regulated by DEP, correct?
Right.
So, and then as far as the slate walks and things like that, that's been existing and there's no issues from DEP in your professional opinion?
There was, there was no issues, no.
Okay. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, you know, I think the applicant's doing the right thing, trying to legalize all these things, you know, hopefully they live there for a long time. But, you know, should they ever decide to sell and someone else moves in there, you know, it, it's less of a headache, uh, or no headache for, for the potential next owner.
Jennifer?
I don't have any questions. I, um, agree with the testimony that the, the garage probably predates those regulations and in all likelihood, they probably won't require any kind of permit. But going through the process gets all the paperwork in order and it just protects the applicant moving forward, like Charlie said, should they wanna, you know, sell the property in the future. Um, you know, I know this has been a long road for them. We met with you guys like, what, almost a year and a half ago? So, um, you know, they have tried to bring the property more into compliance. So, you know, I don't have any, um, additional questions or comments relating to that.
Charlie, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I was, I was on the board in two thousand and three. This came up back then, in two thousand and three, as far as the willing. And I, I believe their LOI didn't even show it.
Um, looking at it, uh, in, in the history and the aerials and things like that, the prior owner might have done some things, you know, I don't know if it was a stream and a channel and they kinda choked things up or s- or something like that. There may have been modifications to it. Uh, long and short, you know, the applicant's going through the proper means right now with DEP to try to validate everything that's, that's there. They're not proposing any changes. It's been there for some time. You know, I, I think we leave it in DEP's hands and, and, and that's, that's what it is. Um, the only last two comments, and it's not for Brian, I just wanna get it on the record before we move forward to any public comment or questions or board questions. Going back to the fence, obviously, the property is in the north. They got the letter from Mr. Wong. To the south, it is, uh, NJ Transit right away. There is fence that goes over there. What I would just say, Mr. Chair, is leave that as a private matter between the applicant and, and NJ Transit and just acknowledge if they require them to remove it at some point in the future that, you know, they have to do that. Uh, and then the last thing, or last two things, um, anytime the application comes before the board, the board typically requires right-of-way dedication along the property frontage. Um, Todd, does the applicant have any issue with providing right-of-way dedication? I don't think the board wants anything to be relocated at this time. Just grant the right-of-way. Uh, if it ever needs to be moved in the future for roadway widening, you know, the applicant or owner at that time bears all costs for remove, uh, relocating anything.
Yeah, I'm, I don't think that's a problem, Joe.
Okay. And then the last note, I'll just say, Monmouth County Board of Health obviously noted the septic system is for four-bedroom dwelling. You know, if there's any other bathrooms or bedrooms in the carriage house proposed any time, you know, they gotta get Monmouth County Board of Health approval for that. But, um, you know, that's, that's an outside agency thing, so.
Hey, Charlie, I just wanna also notice, we're gonna have sewer down there very shortly.
Yeah, that, that is true. So obviously, I think we only granted preliminary for the Rock Solid. So, I mean, it might not be for some time. Uh, but, you know, we could put it on the record and Todd, you, you know, applicant become aware, Rock Solid, their warehouse to the north, they are putting sewer forced main. So there's a potential to connect and, you know.
That may be, uh, that may be an advantage for my client down the road as well, so, uh.
Yeah, I don't know how quickly that's coming. Obviously, I think they only got preliminary. So, uh, you know, there's some time on that. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Jen, we have one, uh, last witness.
Hang on, board members, do y'all have any questions of this witness?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Seiya.
So, uh, for Charlie and Jen, um, you know, I'm asking the question about the, uh, the garage that's close to the waterway. And, uh, is that the one that has the wood stored in it?
That is correct.
So, is it in our best interest to re-categorize that as maybe a storage shed that doesn't have any, um, any hazardous materials or anything of that sort that's allowed to be placed in it? How do we, how do we protect ourselves with that waterway?
So, I think.
Since we're rectifying everything else is what I'm saying.
I, I think as the board, we acknowledge that that has been there for some time. Mr. DeBois indicated that it seems to predate, as far as his looking at the aerials predates the flood hazard rules in two thousand and seven. They're going through the appropriate means with DEP to get any FHA determination. If DEP says they need a permit after the fact, they're gonna get that. If DEP says the building's gotta get moved or taken down, you know, then the building may have to get moved or, or taken down. But, um, you know, it's really leaving it in DEP's hands, I think, with regard to relocation and permit after the fact for it. So I would.
It's one fifty.
So our requirement's a hundred feet, Mr. Seiya? So I think the testimony from Mr. DeBois was that at its closest point, it was like a hundred and thirty-eight feet plus or minus?
Hundred thirty.
For the garage? What'd you say, Todd?
I believe it's one thirty.
One thirty. So they're in excess of our requirements. So it's a DEP matter. We don't have any.
So it's not one fifty from center line is what you're saying?
Our requirement's a hundred.
Yes, so, Mr. Seiya, our ordinance requires a hundred-foot stream corridor and then an additional hundred-foot stream corridor buffer. So it's in that outer hundred-foot buffer. So it's not in the stream corridor itself.
Correct. And it's a pre-existing condition, so that they're not exacerbating with the application. So it's really just a DEP matter. I think we'll be okay.
No, it's really a, a shed from the nineties, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
It's not a structure you're gonna wanna save. If we had to get a DEP permit, my guess is my client would probably take it down.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Hey, any other questions from the board?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we have one last witness, Christine Cofone, our planner.
Yes, sir.
She is online.
Yes, I am. Hello.
Christine, I know it's not necessary, but would you please put your professional and educational qualifications on the record for the board?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Cohen. My name is Christine Nazarek Cofone. I am a professional planner, testifying, uh, before this board and about four hundred other boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing as twenty, for about twenty-five years as a land development consultant. I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services, and my license is current and valid.
We accept your credentials, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, so I know you heard a lot of testimony on this application tonight. Um, it's a fairly straightforward application. As you heard from our prior witnesses, the line share of the application, um, results in your, pertains to improvements that are existing on the property today. The applicant is really just looking to sort of join the two structures, which from a planning point of view eliminates certain variance relief because you're eliminating having the multiple structures, um, on the property. So adding the breezeway as proposed by the applicant makes the structure a little bit more conforming, actually, from a planning point of view. Um, so there is that benefit. Property is located in an SED zone, despite the fact that it's developed residentially. Residential uses are not a permitted use in the zone. So even though it seems like a fairly straightforward and de minimis addition to what's going on on the property, the reason the applicant is before you tonight is because the use, despite the fact that it's existing and has existed for years in this, in this fashion, this is exactly the conditions of the property when the applicant brought it. It's just not a permitted use in the zone. So, um, I think that what you do have tonight is you have the ability to impose reasonable conditions. I'm sure the applicant would accept a condition of approval, that there be no hazardous materials stored in the shed. I, I heard earlier, for the purpose of the record, you would like us to request that side yard setback variance. I'm sure you had an opportunity to review the survey that was done by Morgan Engineering and you see that that pool belong, uh, joins a former Conrail, um, railroad right-of-way. So there's no, and it's been there for years. We're not looking to install that on the property. So certainly, um, there's no negative impact from my professional opinion from a, uh, from a planning point of view, if the board were to move favorably on granting or really legitimizing that variance. So I think the board can look at as far as special reasons to grant this variance. I think you can look at criteria G, which talks about sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. I think you could look at M, inefficient use of the land. I think the proposed breezeway is, um, a neat idea to sort of connect these structures on the property and allow the applicant to really enjoy the full use of the property in an efficient manner that eliminates a non-conformity for the multiple building, um, uses. And I think also criteria I, a desirable envi- visual environment. We provided to you some, um, architecturals before. So I think it's certainly going to have a great curb appeal and be an attractive structure. So all of those are consistent with the purposes of the municipal land use law and satisfy the burden of proof for the special reasons. Moreover, if you look at the two thousand and nineteen master plan, there was a specific goal, actually, on page four of that master plan that talked about encourage and support the rehabilitation and infill of the housing stock. So I think, you know, it didn't just say new housing stock, but it looked at the rehabilitation of existing housing stock. It didn't say conforming housing stock. It just said existing housing stock. And I think that you can certainly find as a, as a board that this is consistent with that specific goal in the master plan. With that, that we, this is a burden of proof to demonstrate to the board that the negative criteria or that we have no substantial detriment to the public good or the zone plan. Um, as Mr. Conliffe indicated earlier, we are far below the maximum impervious coverage for the subject property. So the additional, the minimal addition, um, to the building is certainly not going to have any substantial detriment as far as any substantial detriment to the public good. Again, these are conditions that have prevailed on the property for years and this gives the board an opportunity to really sort of legitimize and create a record of those and hopefully approve the, um, the application that's before you tonight so the applicant can continue to enjoy and improve, um, this property with no, uh, negative impacts to the zone plan and the surrounding area. So I think that we have certainly substantiated our burden of proof for the totality of the variance relief that is requested in conjunction with this application. And I am confident that, um, the board, from a planning point of view, can move the application favorably with no substantial detriment to the zone plan or the public good.
Thank you, Christine. Any questions of the planner?
Jennifer?
I agree with the testimony. I think honestly, this is a kind of a de minimis application. Really, they are bringing the site more into conformance. They're, they're curing some things that have occurred in the past, whether it be the variance for the cabana or going through the DEP process to make sure that everything is as it should be. But the breezeway connects those two structures and makes it one principal structure, which is something that I would encourage. Um, so while I get the fact that this is in an SED zone, the site has been residential for years and years and this just brings it more into conformance with our residential requirements. So I would take no exception if the board acted favorably on the application.
Thank you. Charlie?
Uh, the one comment I just have, Mr. Chair, going back to, um, the right-of-way dedication. So, uh, they do new relief for the front yard setback. They're proposing twenty-six point seven feet. So obviously, they, they don't have the center line of the road on there. So when they do do the twenty-five foot half width, that setback could get less. Uh, I just wanna put it on the records, you know, I have no issue with it, but that dimension may change on any subsequent, uh, you know, plants and middles. Uh, it's not changing the setback from the road. That's all physically staying the same. It's just a technical thing I wanna note for the board's record.
Thank you. Mr. Stanton, you have any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, but I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes?
No, sir, I'm good to go.
Mr. Moretti?
I'm good.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No questions, no comments, Mr. Chairman, but thank you.
Mr. Cantor?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sayah?
You know, Mr. Chairman, I'm not having the plans in front of me, and I'm just have the question of whether or not that this particular residential property has been grandfathered, you know, prior to the SED zones being set in place. Is there any connection to, to that?
No, I, they, they have previous variances. When Drew, Drew on the property back in two thousand and three, they, they came before the board, um. I was looking at this, I think you were on the board at that time, but I, I don't know if you voted on it. But uh, they, they came back for an addition in, in doing some things just because of the SED zone. That was the only reason they had to come to the board then, at, at that time, and so, you know, it, it, by that variance, that, that kinda superseded any type of grandfather. Hey, Mr. Troply, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the resolution from two thousand and three, actually, it was the one that I drew.
Yes.
And um, application at the time is for a used variance and bulk variances to expand an existing residential dwelling, so as far as I'm concerned, at least from two thousand and three, the board was satisfied. That settles the issue.
I'm satisfied with all the testimony, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir, Mr. Martin?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Roscoe?
I'm okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other witnesses, Todd?
No, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation.
Okay, at this time, I take, entertain a motion to open to public for comments and questions of any of the witnesses of the applicant.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mr. Hughes?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Sayah, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, at this time, we'll, we'll take questions of the applicant, their witnesses, questions and comments.
Eileen?
If any member of the public wishes to comment or ask questions regarding this application, please use the raise your hand feature to be brought into the meeting, you will need to be sworn in, give your name and address, and you will need audio and video, thank you.
Do we have anybody, Eileen? You're muted.
You're muted, Eileen.
Yes, Mr. Pape is on the phone or in the meeting, just give him a minute to set up his audio and video. Mr. Pape, you're muted and we need your video.
Still muted, boy, that looks uncomfortable, Mr. Pape.
Sure does.
Mr. Pape, you're muted, you have to unmute yourself, or can you unmute?
You're a little sideways, Ken.
I don't know, it's not his phone.
There you go.
Please, on the phone.
I'm on my.
Ken, we can, we can hear you now.
Eileen, members of the board, I, I, I did not, I touched that button by mistake and I apologize to all.
Turn, turn your, yeah, turn your phone, stand your phone straight up and down.
I'll figure it out, okay.
So you don't have any questions or comments?
Oh my goodness, look, yeah, I see what you're saying, you know, I have no comments on this, that was a mistake on my part, and I apologize to, to Todd, and I hope everybody got some humor out of me being sideways, I'll see if I can figure that out.
Thank you.
Thank you, is there anybody else from the public which to make a comment or ask a question?
I don't see anyone else with their hand raised.
Not seeing any, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public.
Thank you, Mr. Sayah, do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes, all in favor? All opposed, okay. Mr. Cohen?
Mr. Chairman, very briefly, um, we've got a fairly simple application before the board this evening, complicated by some older structures and environmental issues, which I believe my client professionals have addressed each and every one and everything raised by your professionals. Uh, I think Christine and our architect laid out the reasonings for the variances, and I would ask that the board uh, move forward this evening and grant the application as requested with the representations made this evening on the record.
Thank you, Charlie, any final comment?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Jennifer?
No, sir.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, BA twenty dash one oh two. I'm very satisfied with the testimony both by the applicant's uh, professionals and our professionals, and I think the only issue that I had would be covered by the DEP inspection getting permits, and I think it's a beautiful structure, and I have no issue uh, making a motion for that.
Thank you, sir, I have a motion by Mr. Martins, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Sayah. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Um, I would like to, just like to add to that, the uh, the setback on the cabana, you know, uh, granting that, and with that, I'd like to say yes.
Thank you, Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Uh, based upon everything that has been presented, I say yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes, based on the strength of the testimony and the fact that we are moving in the proper direction, absolutely, yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes, based on all testimony placed on the record by professionals, the applicant, and then also, you know, I, I just wanna say, if, if the property wasn't an SED property, you know, they, they might have some issues with coverage, but other than that, they wouldn't be before the board as it is, so my vote is yes, awesome.
Motion carries.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and everybody for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys. Okay. You wanna move on to the next case?
Okay, so we're off?
Yep.
We're done?
Okay, case number BA nineteen twenty-three, Yeshiva Imek Hatorah Ik, I'm probably all wrong, but that's it.
Hatorah, Mr. Chairman, Hatorah.
Hatorah.
Close enough.
Got you, Hatorah. Application of Yeshiva Imek Hatorah Ik and Title fifteen, not-for-profit corporation, as applicant in Yeshiva Imek Hatorah Ik, Lot twenty-two, twenty-three, and congregation told us, Yeshiva.
Yes.
Yava Yeshiva of Lakewood, Lot twenty-three point oh one, as owner seeking a used variance approval to expand Yeshiva Imek Hatorah in existing private high school and postgraduate school located Lot twenty-three. Existing one-story educational facility located Lot twenty-three is to remain and be repurposed by the applicant. All existing structures and improvements located in subject residential Lot twenty-two, twenty-three oh one are to be removed. The two-story, twenty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine square foot school building with basement is proposed to be located predominantly on Lot twenty-two, but also partially on Lot twenty-three and twenty-three oh one. The application was also proposing another associated improvements on premises known as Block sixty-nine, Lot twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three oh one. This is a bifurcated application for used variance approval only at this. The applicant was originally scheduled October twenty-six, twenty-twenty, when it was carried to November thirtieth, twenty-twenty, with no further notice, after some testimony was placed on the record November thirtieth, twenty-twenty, the applicant was adjourned and carried to January eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. Expiration date, January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Eligible voters, Hughes, Martins, O'Donnell, Roscoe, Sayah, Cantor, Gonzalez, and Nansen. Okay, Mr. Pape?
Mr. Chairman, I am very, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I do not know how to fix my video to make me, so that I'm not, did that do it? No.
Go the other way, turn it the other way, one more time, there you go, got it.
Right, uh, Mr. Chairman, before we uh, begin with Mr. Pape, I wasn't sure if Mr. Cohen uh, wanted to address the board, I saw his hand raised for a moment, is, is that correct, Mr. Cohen?
Yes, if I could have one second?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, in light of the hour, um, do you think we're gonna get to the next application this evening? Um, if not, I had previous discussions with Eileen where we might be able to put it on for next two weeks from now, twenty-fifth, I believe, um, which is fine with my client.
I, I tell you, it's nine, it's after nine o'clock now, Mr. Pape, I, I'm sure you're gonna be another hour, at least.
Mr. Chair, I have four witnesses, two that are very brief, that are being recalled to answer just a couple of questions. The architect is also intended to be brief, and then Christine is the planner. I, I would imagine that there's an hour involved.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Cohen, if you don't mind, if we could carry, Eileen, how, how backed up are we on the twenty-fifth?
Give me one second. Hold on, I have my sheet.
We talked about putting that first, maybe, I think.
We have an objector to that.
The twenty-fifth.
Not anymore, I don't think.
The twenty-fifth has two applications right now, one is Todd's that was carried to that date, the other one is Mr. Pape's that was scheduled for that date.
You, you don't think we have an objector to that now?
I can represent to you that uh, my client met with the objector this morning, they seemed to have worked everything out. I did speak to the objector's attorney this afternoon, I sent him a memo confirming that, and uh, yes, I believe they're not appearing this evening. They might be, if they're on a video, they could tell you for themselves, but I don't think they're here.
Okay, um, okay, then, let, let's go to the twenty-fifth. And if, if you don't have any objection, we'll move that to the first, Mr. Cohen.
That's fine with me and my client.
Okay. Eileen?
Yes.
Okay, uh, case number BA nineteen twenty-six, Oakland Road LLC will be carried to January twenty-fifth with no further notice, and do we need the extension of time? Yeah, well, we, can we get an extension of time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll give an extension of time through uh, the end of February.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, sorry, Kenny.
Okay, Ken, now, now that you're not laying down, you ready to move forward?
Good evening, good evening, I'm sitting here absolutely panicking because without my son to help me with the computer, I, I just go into a panic, but I, I think we solved it, I think we solved it. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, board members, good evening, board professionals. Kenneth Pape, on behalf of your applicant, and I have been working hard at learning how to pronounce Yeshiva's Imek Hatorah, I think that I pronounced it properly, this is, as the board members are aware, the private high school that's located on Kent Road, about seven hundred feet below Ford. It's the location of the existing school, and this is a request for a used variance to expand that school on the property. The board will recall that we began our presentation November thirtieth, and on November thirtieth, the board heard the testimony of Jack Mandelbaum, who was the spokesperson for the school, and the testimony of Louis Zogner, the engineer for the project, and the testimony of Scott Kennel, the traffic um, expert. During the presentation, the board had a couple of questions and some direction for the applicant. And this evening, Mr. Louis Zogner's testimony will be exceptionally brief. It is for the purpose of introducing an exhibit showing that the proposed building has been reduced in size. And there is also testimony from Scott Kennel that is similarly brief. You asked that he identified to you, that he observed the, the bus movements of the school, the other school that is on the same roadway, to confirm that they are not conflicting with the bus movements that are associated with uh, the, this, this school. And also, you asked if he would share with you the, the um, intersection levels of service for the two nearest intersections. And he's prepared to testify on those points, and I'm also gonna ask that he remind the board, because I'm not sure we did it thoroughly, of the road improvements that are proposed, this board may recall, we, we said we would do full curving, full sidewalk and, and road widening, but I wanted him to put that on. The witness, the next witness is the architect, who, because architecture is, is really a site plan issue, there are affirmative representations that the architect will make, but I see her testimony as brief. And then, Mr. Chair and board members, we would go to Ms. Cofone for her planning testimony. Is that an acceptable procedure for the time that remains this evening?
Yes, sir.
It is, thank you. Then I would ask that Louis Zogner, if he's not yet been admitted, be admitted, and um, I'll remind him that he is under oath and that his credentials are on the record, and ask if he, I think what we would, I don't know whether it's Mr. Howard who is going to put up the new site plan or the new variant sketch that was prepared as an exhibit to be responsive to comments, or Mr., or Mr. Zogner is to do it, but we'll need to get that out. So, is Mr. Zogner on?
I am, yes.
Mr. Zogner, uh, do you have the ability to screen share to put up that, that screen?
I believe I do.
Is that acceptable, Eileen, if, if we, we put it up?
Yes.
Okay, then, so Louis, you're under oath?
Yes.
And you're sworn, your, your credentials are on the record, if you could just very briefly identify what this exhibit is and why it's being shown to the board?
Certainly, can everyone see the colored rendering, is that being shared now?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Has, has this been?
Excuse, this has not been entered, and I don't even have this one.
Okay, this is an exhibit that we prepared for this evening to, uh, to be responsive to the board's concerns about building sizes.
Yeah, but I did not get a copy of that, so we have to mark that one.
Yes, okay.
So. That's A twenty-one.
Thank you, so if, Louis, if you could read the title block for the record, so that A twenty-one is properly memorialized, and then describe its purpose.
Certainly, this is entitled Use Variance Plan, dated today, January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. And this is a update to the previous colored rendering, so it is a um, assembly of the multiple elements of different pages in this variance plan set that was submitted, and it's done in color. Shows an aerial image in the background, it colors the site exactly as what had been shown to the board at the previous hearing. The difference in this plan is that this shows an updated footprint for the proposed school building.
And the, if you could share with the board the reduction in the footprint and the resulting reduction in the building size that would be, would be created by saying?
Certainly, and just as a reminder, the building we're talking about is the one lower on this plan, it's sort of a L shape. Uh, the, previously, this building in footprint was twenty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine square feet. It's been reduced to twenty-four thousand. It's been reduced to twenty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-five square feet by shortening it in length. Now, the building coverage is at eleven point five percent, with a requirement in this zone as twelve percent.
Okay, Mr. Chair, that is the only new testimony I have of Mr. Zogner. But while he is on, I just wanted, it was something that I wasn't certain we made completely clear. Mr. Zogner, we had made a commitment to have a fifty-foot buffer on all sides of the property and to design the buffer where appropriate to be a residential buffer and where appropriate to be a farmland buffer. And if you could just confirm that you have accomplished that with the plan in every area except for the portion behind the existing building.
That is correct. We have accomplished the fifty-foot buffer with the exception of the existing school building.
Okay, I have, Mr. Chair, I have nothing further of Mr. Zogner this evening. He has.
I have one question. Now, Mr. Zogner, you're the engineer, correct?
I am, yes.
Okay, the architect, are they going to be able to testify in a bit?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, coming up.
I have no questions there. Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so just a couple of quick comments and questions. So Mr. Zogner's office forward a courtesy copy of the revised stormwater management report. Louis, you guys expanded the footprint of two of the basins, right? The central one and then the lower one in the lower right-hand corner of the building?
Correct, yes, you can see those in a black, a light black outline, sorry, outline here in the parking area and closer to the entrance.
And I previously had comments about infiltrating more than a water quality storm and everything now, you have an orifice set at the water quality storm elevation, and then the expansion of the basin, you're meeting all the rate reductions and everything's good from that perspective, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And you'll submit a revised copy as a condition of any approval for the site plan application, correct?
Certainly, and of course, continue to work with you to make sure that it all is satisfactory.
And then the only other comment, Mr. Chair, I do have is I previously noticed about the overflow parking to the east of the thirty-foot circulation drive about providing a guide rail there because of proximity to the basin. Since the central one is expanded to, I just asked that that fence between the grass paver parking in the basin be switched to a guide rail to Louis, just for consistency.
Understood, that makes sense.
And acceptable.
Sorry, I was, heard a little cross talk there. And then the only other thing that I had a comment about, and I think we talked about it, might have talked about it at the last meeting, with the driveway, Louis, you guys can, you guys are providing a site triangle, isn't there, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. That is all I have for Mr. Zogner, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thank you.
I don't have any questions. I appreciate the fact that the applicant went back and revised the plans. We, if you recall at the last hearing, we had asked them to try to come up with a proposal that would comply with the building coverage, and now they're below the twelve percent. So I have no questions regarding this testimony.
Thank you. Any of the board members have any questions?
No, sir, not me.
I'm good.
Everybody good?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, you know, the thing is, as long as the circulation drive is good now and, you know, for fire and safety, I think that's what we're looking at, right?
Yep.
If I may, Mr. Seiya, we had taken this to the fire chief on a number of occasions, and we're very pleased that he provided a report saying that he was satisfied with the design. There's a lot of elements to this plan that are from the hand of Chief Lewis, but he, his letter says he's satisfied.
Good.
Thank you.
Can we get the board back? There we go, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I was just wondering, this here location, this is going to be a school, if I'm reading this correctly, is that correct?
Correct.
Pardon me?
It has been a school for forty years.
Yeah, Mr. Moretti, it's already a school, they're just expanding the school.
They're just expanding it, okay, because it also said in the explanation here it's going to be used for other purposes, and I was just wondering what other purposes are, that's all. Says the school building with basement is proposed. I'll find it in a second.
Yeah, I see it's almost in the middle, in the middle somewhere, right?
Yes.
And I just was wondering, what's other purposes?
No, this, the proposed use of the, the existing use of the property is a school and only a school, and the proposal is only a school. We made a point the last time of identifying the living quarters that the school owns in Lakewood on the same street, so there'll never be a dormitory here. We stipulated no dormitory request would be introduced. It's purely a school.
Okay, thank you.
Right, but Ken, to that end, the school is not just school and that's it. There are other activities that take place at the school, correct?
There's school activities.
Right, no, I understand, but I think that that's what he's asking.
Yeah, there's school activities, there's the parent-teacher night, we went through that. There's graduation, there's, on an annual basis, there's three times that there's events that involve the parents or grandparents coming to the property, all of which were placed on the record, all of which are school-related. And no, there's no leasing of the premises, there's no outsiders who use the premises. It is only for the use by the school and only for the education purposes or the three events that are related to the education, all of which were placed on the record.
Fine, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for the opportunity.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a question, I'm not sure where this would come in, but previously, we heard testimony from the neighbor to the immediate north, who was concerned about the proximity of the school right under his property. It was testified tonight that the buffer is going to be fifty feet, but I would like to hear some testimony from this bureau about the trees that are currently there, if they're going to be tall trees and new trees that are being there. I'm still want to protect that neighbor from having this huge school with a lot of lights. It was immediate property line.
Yeah, the plan they just put up, I don't have any specifics on that plan, though.
If I may, it's presented as a use variance plan with buffers and a commitment from the applicant to have the full residential buffer where residential is required and the full farmland buffer where farmland is required. And as we indicated at the last meeting, that full design remains subject to Mr. Cunliffe, Ms. Beam, and Ms. Bureau's approval, but it would be part of a site plan.
Thank you.
This is just use variance only.
I understand, but they also are talking about the buffers. Is the northern property line, Mr. Seiya, that you're talking about behind, or Mr. Cantor, I'm sorry, I don't remember who brought this up, behind the existing school building?
The northern property line, behind the new, the proposed new building, the neighbor to the immediate left, if you're facing the property on Kent Road.
Got it, yeah.
Lot twenty-one.
Yeah, I have issues, I have questions about the lighting too, Mr. Cantor, but I was going to wait till the architect test.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, I can just add on to that. So there is, looking at the aerial, there's a lot of existing trees in that vicinity of that fifty-foot buffer, but a lot of them are significant in height. So I think, and Sherry can chime in, a lot of the plantings that are going to be proposed is understory to fill in that gap in the height of, you know, grade to the bottom of the canopy of those trees. Is that accurate, Sherry?
Yeah, I mean, what they have showing in there from the previous submission are like full evergreen trees. You know, we have to do a site visit out there and see, you know, we'll field locate them, I'm sure. I don't know how overgrown the area was with vines and whatnot on that side, it's hard to tell. But I mean, certainly, we can work on that, and I would say, once they're at, you know, site plan phase, we could, you know, have a field meeting out there and take a better look.
Which is perfectly acceptable to your applicant, and I think it's the best way to get the best buffer.
Any, anything else from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just following up with that buffer, I did notice on the plan, Sherry, I saw white pines and spruces. The white pines might be okay, but do you think the spruces are going to need more sunlight? And with the school building, I don't know if that's going to be the suitable plant there. So as long as you can, you know, assure us that, you know, something else could go in, maybe more appropriate, I'd be okay with it.
Yeah, I haven't made any comments on, you know, specifics yet, I was waiting on all that.
Yeah, we got to get to site plan.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Pape?
Yes, thank you.
Now, before we were opening it up to public after ever witness, we're just going to hold off these witnesses, and we'll open up one time to public.
Okay, that's very, thank you. The next witness is Scott Kennel, who also testified and whose credentials were shared with the board, and his expertise was established, and he's also under oath. And the questions that were asked of him were to review the traffic associated with the other school on the roadway, and I know that he went out and made those observations, and also to report to the board on the levels of service at the two nearest intersections. Mr. Kennel, are you available? Are you on?
Yes, I am.
Good evening, and Mr. Kennel, I remind you that you're under oath, and I'm going to ask if you could speak to those issues that I just outlined for you.
Sure, yes, I understand, I'm still under oath, and hello, everyone. The first aspect of it dealt with questions raised about the additional traffic generated by this applicant on the intersection of County Line Road and Kent Road, and specifically as it relates to the elementary school that's located at that intersection in the northwest quadrant. We contacted the school and first off, found out that their hours of operation, they, classes commence at nine fifteen, and they end between three and four P M. If we recall my testimony previously, the school that's subject to this application, classes begin between seven forty-five and eight A M, well, an hour, over an hour before the other school begins, and classes are dismissed at nine and nine thirty. So well beyond the peak periods of the elementary school to the south. I also conducted observations at the elementary school in Lakewood on Wednesday, December twenty-third, and school buses started arriving at eight fifty-five and continued to approximately nine twenty, or there were sixteen school buses. So again, I validated the information we had as far as traffic associated with that school, which is well beyond the traffic influence associated with this application. I also researched data we had of that intersection, because there's a question how well that intersection operates. And during the peak hours, which are in the morning, eight forty-five to nine forty-five, and this is based on data from November of two thousand eighteen, the intersection on an overall basis is operating a level service B. And in the afternoon, the peak hour occurs at that intersection from three to four P M with an overall level service B. So the intersection is functioning well, and again, the peak hours occur outside of the peak traffic times that are generated by the subject application.
Mr. Kennel?
Yes.
Real quick, that's B as in boy?
B as in boy, correct.
Both, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
There was also a question about the level of service at Kent Road and Ford Road. I referred to data that my office collected, again, we did a traffic study along Ford Road. We collected data in November of two thousand eighteen. And reviewing the, those traffic volumes, it was determined that that intersection is operating a level service B, B as in boy, in both the morning and afternoon periods. So I think that addressed a number of questions raised by the board. There was also a question, or just a follow-up on Mr. Pape's comment as far as the site frontage improvements. Those specific details will have to be finalized with Charlie once, if this use is granted, but it's expected that there'll be some widening along the frontage to provide a shoulder. There will be curbing, and there will be a sidewalk. And the benefits of that would also mean some clearing of vegetation close to Kent Road, which is going to improve the sightlines to the north. So it's going to daylight the driveway and make it more noticeable for motorists on Kent Road. So that would definitely be an enhancement to the current condition. So that's, according to my notes, that concludes my additional testimony.
Scott, I just would like you to make clear, it's not typical for you to reach back two, two-plus years for your traffic studies, but you did because COVID-nineteen made traffic counting this past year, let's just say, suspect, so you.
Well, there's adjustments in there, depending on where the counts are done, there are more adjustments than others that you would have to get to pre-COVID conditions, correct?
So, and these were pre-COVID conditions that you just shared with the board?
Correct.
Okay, and Mr. Chair, I have nothing further, Mr. Kennel. Those were the questions that we recorded as being open, that the board members had asked that he be prepared to address tonight.
Charlie?
Mr. Chair, just one quick question from Mr. Kennel. So similar to County Line Road with Kent Road and Ford Road, I think there was testimony that only approximately twenty percent of the site traffic from the applicant's site would head north towards Kent and Ford, and that is to occur similarly outside of the peak hours for that intersection, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, so there's no, no anticipated impact to the level of service of that intersection during the peak hour or outside of the peak hour?
No, I mean, obviously, there'll be increased traffic, but I wouldn't expect a measurable impact in levels of service.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Jennifer?
No, I have nothing, thanks.
Okay, board members, do you have any questions of Mr. Kennel?
Yes, sir.
We're good, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pape?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kennel, thank you. Our third witness is Katie Flores. Katie is our, the architect representative. Katie, are you on? Katie?
I do not see her.
Here she is.
He's being brought in now.
Oh, great, thank you. Katie Flores, when you're on, please announce yourself to us.
I am present.
Hi, thank you. Katie Flores is our architect, has not yet testified on this application. Ms. Flores did testify in Howell previously on other applications, but I'm going to ask if you could begin, if you could, if counsel could swear you in, and then we'll go through your credentials.
Okay.
Mr. Tropoli?
Okay, Katie, please raise your right hand, swear this testimony will give this evening to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so be God.
I do.
Write your full name, please.
Catherine Mary Flores.
Your witness.
Thank you. Ms. Flores, would you share with the board and the board's professionals in the public your education and professional credentials?
I'd be happy to, thanks, Ken. Good evening, everyone. I do go by the name of Katie Flores. I'm actually pretty much born and raised in New York, New Jersey. I received my education from NJIT, I don't know how many years ago at this point. I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey since two thousand and eight. I've been in practice for about twenty years. As Mr. Pape mentioned already, have testified before the Howell Township Board, other local areas, including, obviously, Lakewood, Jackson, Tom's River, as well as before Aberdeen, kind of middle town areas and whatnot.
We accept your credentials, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair and members of the board, we recognize that full architectural review typically occurs during site plan, and we are prepared to. Typically occurs during site plan and we are prepared to, if we move to site plan with this board. To do a very thorough and complete presentation of architecture. This evening, I've asked that Katie Flores be prepared to do, to speak to certain things. And one was to quantify the reduction in the building size. The second was to discuss with the board. The windows that are closest to our neighbor, one lot twenty-one, that's Eric Johnson's property. The windows on the second floor and what their purposes are, you're gonna hear that they're bathrooms and an office. And to make statements about using dark smoked glass in those windows. I've also asked that she briefly describe the. Proposed facelift for the existing building so that that building will be attractive. And compatible with the front building. And I've also asked that she place on the record so that the board has assurances. That she place on the record that the use of the space in the existing building. Will all be described to you, so the recreation areas, office areas and bathrooms will all be described to you. And most important, there'll be this commitment that no portion of that building will have any classrooms. But with that, I would ask, I know that there is an exhibit. That was originally marked as the, the architectural plans for the proposed building. And if we could, if, if that could be introduced to the board, just to briefly describe the type of architecture so that you can. Then describe the compatibility of the facade lift on the old building. Ms. Robina, is that an exhibit that is available, that's from the old, that's the materials that were filed before the November thirtieth hearing?
I'd be happy to screen share them, I do have them up.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Eileen?
Yes, okay.
Yes, that's fine.
So, if you could begin by just showing us the facade of the proposed building.
Will do.
The board can get a sense of the quality of the architecture and the characteristics of the architecture.
Does everyone see my screen with the colored elevations?
Yes.
Um, I do apologize, so most of you know, um, the building is actually kind of a L shape in the corner. These elevations are obviously flattened out, uh, we do have some three D views and I'm just gonna give an overview of one. Um, that I have here that kind of just shows the building in better scale.
I think the three D presentation for purposes of youth grants is ideal.
Yes, so I was gonna show you this one that kind of shows, um, the. This wing of the building, but it's very similar, and I have one showing the other wing as well. Um, so in, in general, um, I did wanna say, just reiterate, this is not the final design for the building. Um, we look forward to working with the board, especially with the board planner. Um, just to make sure we comply and any recommendations you may have to make the building even better. Um, and obviously to be in compliance with the current um. Zoning and planning board ordinance, we look forward to that. And so as you can see, the exterior of the building, uh, we believe that it's a, you know, a very attractive looking building and that it will be. An asset to the township and to the immediate neighborhood. Um, we decided to go with more traditional, uh, building materials on the exterior as far as with brick and stucco. There are some feature, uh, design elements of a metal roof, specifically kind of over the entry areas. That just helped to, um, just bring in a little more prominence to those areas. So the building is primarily clad in this brick veneer and stucco. Um, there's a large amount of glazing, which, you know, we believe is important for the interior and exterior of the building especially. And the windows are also not just, uh, simple rectangular windows, we could see we. Designed some nice, uh, featured, um, archways and whatnot into the building and into the glazing as well to match. So this is the other wing, sorry.
Now, let's talk about those windows for just a moment, okay? So I, I kind of slipped in there that the. Windows in the back of the building on the second floor are the ones that have the potential of. Emanating light onto Mr. Johnson's property. And if you could confirm that those windows are in fact bathroom and or office only?
Correct, so on the second floor, um, sorry about that, I did these plans, uh. Yes, it's, this is of, this is the second floor plan, right, level two, yes. The offices, staff lounge and tutor rooms, bathrooms. Uh, and the stairwell primarily on this kind of left side of the building. And we did agree to do a higher tint, um, on the windows and also obviously to have, um, uh, shades as well.
So you said a higher tint, the words that were used by our, the rabbi with his neighbor were a dark smoked glass. And I'd like you to make that commitment that it will be a dark smoked glass for all of those windows.
Yes, we will use a dark smoked glass on the windows facing the neighbor's side.
And, and that will also include blackout shades for all of those windows, so that there will be in place blackout shades that can be put down.
Yes.
That, I thank you on that, and, and for the record, and I'm hoping Mr. Johnson is with us this evening, but for the record. Rabbi Weinberger made it a point to visit with the neighbor, they had some conversations this past week. All of which I was requested by the rabbi to memorialize in a letter. Um, which we did deliver to Mr. Johnson and also made a part of the record maintained by Ms. Robina. I'm gonna ask. If you could introduce the architecture for the, the facade lift, the facelift that's proposed for the existing building?
Sure. I have that here, and I apologize, we did not have time, obviously do a colored rendering of this. Um, the, um, facade lift, facelift of the existing building, um, we propose to do, uh, similar materials. We would have the stucco obviously match the, um, proposed building. Um, we do also have a stone veneer that we would add, we, we don't know if necessarily we would do the exact brick. But the stone veneer would be a complimentary, you know, color and texture as well, um, just to bring in kind of more of that, um, natural element. Uh, that the brick is reflecting on the facade for this building. So, do you need me to go through the plans as well or just the facelift?
We're, no, I'm, I'm gonna ask you three more questions on the facelift. I do want you to introduce the floor plan, but just one moment, as far as the facelift. And as far as the facade of the new building. The township of Howell has architectural standards and those architectural standards are not necessarily met by these, these. Presentation boards. Would I ask if you would confirm that you will work with the township planner? To make certain that the architectural standards of Howell Township are incorporated into both of these buildings?
Yes, we look forward to the opportunity to work with the planner to comply with standards.
I would just, I would just direct your attention when you're looking to refine the design. To section one eighty-eight dash two twenty-eight C and D in particular. Um, those talk about articulations, length of walls. And that type of thing, so those are gonna be some of the things that I'm gonna be looking for. You know, when you come back for site plan, assuming the board acts affirmatively on the application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I also want you to make, if you would, um, Ms. Flores. There, during the design of these buildings and the presentation over the past few months. These presentations to the board's professionals, the height of the building was discussed. The applicant has agreed that the maximum height of the building will be thirty-five feet, would you from the arc, as an architect, just confirm? That these buildings will be designed with a maximum height of thirty-five feet?
Yes, the maximum building height will be thirty-five feet.
Okay, and, and just, Mr. Chair and members of the board, these commitments are made so that the board. Uh, so that we are creating standards for the board to impose upon the applicant. And to demonstration of that, the, the two buildings, the ultimate design will be as. Reviewed and approved by your professionals and this board, but it is our commitment to create a campus of similar buildings. If you could now take us to the floor plan, the repurposing.
Hey, can I just jump in, I just wanna, uh, comment of clarity just for the, for the board member, so the, the thirty-five feet, that's from. The ground floor, first floor elevation to the top of the, the arched entranceway to the structure, right?
It's, it's, the, oh, the best answer I can give you, Charlie, is to say. Per the ordinance, it will be measured to be a thirty-five foot high building as the ordinance defines height.
Okay, all right, yeah, we measure five feet off of the building to average grade to the height, so, all right, I just wanna make sure that's, that's clear for the board.
Sure, we, we're not looking for any variance, Philip, on the height of the building.
Okay, thank you.
That, you're welcome, thank you for that opportunity. Katie, if you could take, Ms. Flores, if you could take us inside this building and just describe. And, and the description here is, is important because we're making a commitment to the board that there'll be no classrooms. And that the entire interior of the building is going to be support for the school, so each of the rooms' uses should be described, thank you.
You're welcome, um, on the proposed plans, we do have the demolition plan that just shows the footprint. And you'll see from the, um, proposed plan down below, um, the, the building is really designed to be a recreation building. Um, the right side, um, just being a large gymnasium. Um, so there is a proposal to raise the, the roof slightly on that, obviously would stay below. The thirty-five feet requirement, so just kind of starting on this right side. Uh, we do have an entry, um, two, we're just calling it the gym with obviously bathrooms, janitor closet. Um, for the actual, you know, gymnasium athletic area. Then on the left side, um, it is one building, but we have a corridor connecting it to. What is more of, um, the kind of the lounge recreation center, um, obviously bathrooms, uh, to comply just with the occupant load of the building. Um, we have a student lounge, uh, on the top kind of part of the plan. The left side recreation room, we're just showing some ping pong tables and pool tables. Um, uh, we're calling it a snack bar, um. I don't necessarily know the, the exact use of this, the snack bar yet, uh, just where they would really eat to keep food out of the rest of the space. Um, yeah, the accessory, just I mentioned bathrooms, um, and, uh, any offices that might be needed for, uh, for this, uh, proposed, uh, reuse of the structure.
And, and Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that, that, that is your applicant's commitment that this building's repurposing is not to be expanded classrooms. And that we are comfortable with all of these. Descriptions in being incorporated into any relief the board granted.
Mr. Pape?
Yes, sir.
The, the basketball court, is that gonna be a dual-purpose assembly-type? Facility, will they be able to assemble there?
There is that possibility, Mr. Chairman, but it was anticipated that the primary building would be, would be where. Everything, where, where the school activities take place. But the, I guess it's possible that you could put chairs on the basketball court.
What about graduation and, or, or things like that, do you think they would use this building as that?
It's a possibility that they, they could use it for the grad, this space to be available for graduation, it has not been thought. That, we haven't gotten that far, but certainly could, certainly could be.
Well, the, the only reason I'm saying is the restroom facilities and everything would be. Adequate in size enough to handle. However many people is gonna be, you know, indoors.
Yeah, um. We could make certain of that as we, as we move forward. I, I can make this commitment to you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Every square inch of the new building and this building are not available to the public. For any purposes, these are strictly to be used by the school. So these recreational facilities, you may recall that there, we don't have visiting basketball teams, we don't, we don't compete. With other schools, that type of activity doesn't occur, it's strictly for the boys as part of their education. And if you wanted us to explore to make certain that the bathroom facilities were. If, make certain that the bathroom facilities were, um, designed to handle that increased load, we, we can do that.
Well, they, it, it only makes sense because it's a septic system. And, you know, i- if, if you're gonna have a hundred, hundred and fifty people. In an assembly here, you, you're gonna have to have the bathrooms to, to, uh. Take care of that.
The, the main building, and, and Katie, if you could break, show the, the board, the floor plan for the main building. The, the main building, um. Has a dining hall and the dining hall in the main building is, is where we anticipate. That there will be the graduation ceremony.
Okay, you know, um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So this is where I got thrown off here. Um, you know, I was hoping that the old Solomon Schechter. You know, building would be demolished. And that we would have, um, you know, made better use of the, uh, the new building footprint. Um, by, by raising the, uh, the legacy building to a second floor. And so forth, you know, we're within the fifty-foot buffer, it challenges it. And then, uh, not just like you said, but the, uh, the septic system and so forth. But what about as far as the buffering? And you know, that brings me back to Jen. Jen, I mean, if, i- i- if something like this were to take place, now we're looking at a berm, right? I mean, we're raising the, the height of the building, come on now.
I agree, I agree with you and, which is one of the reasons why when I discussed them coming into compliance with building coverage, my recommendation that. Was that it be handled. With the existing building and maybe remove. Portion of the existing building or what have you because of its proximity to the property line. And it's, you know, it's existing condition in that buffer, so, you know, that's gonna be something. That's, you know, we're gonna need to see a lot more detail on that. Um, I also have some concerns about this quote-unquote snack bar. Like, uh, you know, if the kids are going over there to play in the gym and it's a walkable situation and you have a dining hall in the existing building, what exactly are you doing in that snack bar? Cause to me, it just seems very unnecessary and like I said. You know, that's concerning to me as well, is there gonna be kitchen in there, is there, you know, are you cooking, is there gonna be odors that are in proximity to residential development that's next door? I think that snack bar, Ken, is a problem for you.
Um, thank you.
I don't know why you need it, I think it's a complete waste of space. I mean, I have kids that go to school and let's be honest, they're not gonna go to a snack bar to eat, they're gonna go to their backpack, take something out of it, shove it in their mouth and move on. Like, it's not, it's unnecessary and it creates concerns for me about the use of that building.
Yep, and I, I think the intent is more of like vending machines and stuff, not necessarily any. There's no kitchen or cooking equipment.
I agree, but it's a big space for vending machines, a vending machine could be in the hallway, I mean, it, it's, how big is that space? Square footage-wise?
So it's eighteen by eighteen, the room.
That's a gigantic space for some vending machines.
So, I think that we can. I think that we can safely say that we do not need to have something labeled as a snack bar. And that the comments that you've raised about concerns over odors or cooking are, are valid. Um, I would represent to you that we're comfortable, we could work out a, a, an appropriate use of that space. And avoid it being a snack bar. Um, if, if, it was envisioned by the, your applicant that there might be water coolers and there might be. That there might be vending machines, but we can revisit that. And, and Mr. Sayah, the, there is not a second story, uh, the. The comments of Ms. Flores were that we would like to raise the ceiling height in the basketball court. To accommodate the, playing basketball, but not introducing a second story.
Right, but Ken, I mean, how high are we talking? Typically a gym is, is like a story and a half, if not two stories. And I think what Mr. Sayah is saying is that that location is close to your, your buffer behind that building is not fifty feet. And so now you're incre, like, it's one thing if you're just refacing the building, which is what this plan shows me. It doesn't really represent like this increase in the building height. Um. So, you know, that's problematic with respect to impact on the buffer. I think, you know, we initially intend, like, listen, I'm not saying this was a surprise, I know we talked about this and these plans were emailed over to me. But initially, when we spoke at the last meeting about complying with the building coverage, it was directed at dealing with something to do with that building, not. The new building, and I understand you did get it under and I appreciate the fact that you've done that. But raising that building height in that buffer, it, right now, it's an existing condition. Once you raise the roof, now you're exaggerating a variance, or you're creating a new variance.
Yep.
I think the most important thing that I can say to you is this. The purpose of this plan was to give assurances to the board that this proper, this building would not be repurposed into classrooms now or in the future. I am very comfortable stating that we are, we. If this example of floor plan use is not consistent with your, with the board members. Vision or requirements. is not consistent with your, with the board members' vision or requirements, we still make the commitment to the board. We make the commitment to board that it will only be support uses. I do not want the, the most important part of the application is the new school. Working out the details of this, if, and if those details are, Mr. Say, that the building cannot be raised in height. If those details are that there's, there's not to be a food station or snack bar. And all of that is acceptable, but we can work that out at site plan. And if you wanted to put those as restrictions on the applicant, we would find them to be acceptable. We're looking to make a commitment so that you had assurances that this would not grow into a school building.
Jen, can I just ask Mr. Pate two questions that I think might also lend to the, to existing buildings? So obviously you're seeking relief for higher education use here. It's not atypical for like a college or junior college to have, you know, a rec center where they rent, where they actually like will have members of the public get memberships to go use the rec center and things like that. None of that is proposed with the, with the building, correct?
It is not only not proposed, there's an absolute commitment that there's no such activities at the site.
Okay. And then as far as the gymnasium in the building, as far as recreation on the site, there's not going to, would the applicant agree to a condition that there's no outside recreation on the site?
Yes. And in fact, when Mr. Mandelbaum was describing how the school operates, he pointed out that there's intra competition, boys from the school play basketball games with each other, but there is not other schools coming here. There's no outside competition or activities or tournaments at all. It's strictly for the boys at the school.
So there's not going to be any temporary basketball nets outside in the parking area at 10 o'clock at night, right? Everything's contained inside the building.
That's the goal. That's the goal.
All right. And then just another clarification on the proposed building. So I know there was an agreement with the windows facing the neighbor to the north about the second story being tinted. Are we just talking about the second story offices or are we talking about tinting all windows along that northerly property line there?
The windows that are the offices and bathrooms that are ones that are facing our residential neighbor. The extent of it, we can work out with, with you and with Jennifer. But the goal is to make certain that none, none of the windows that would allow light to emanate onto this property would be anything other than smoked glass.
So both floors?
We didn't plan on doing it on the first floor, but if that's.
The only reason I ask is because that meeting room, and I think there's another room there too, are two story and have pretty sizable windows that span both floors.
The answer is the goal is to make certain that no light spills from our property onto our neighbors. So to the extent that additional windows need to be smoked glass, we'll work with you and we'll, we'll agree to do so. Our goal is to protect our neighbor.
All right. And then the last question I have from Ms. Flores is the architectural floor plan and the, and the elevation shows at the west side of the, of the building, a freight door and a freight elevator. And there's no access way to that. Is that being relocated somewhere else on the building or is that being eliminated? What's the, what's going on there?
Yeah, we actually were reviewing that after the last meeting. It hasn't been decided, but yes, it was going to have to be relocated. Just there's, there's no access to that side.
All right. So the applicant's agreeing that there's not going to be any access proposed when they come back for site plan at the back of the building, other than just general emergency pedestrian entryways?
Correct.
That is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Hey, any further from Jennifer?
I just don't know that I got clarification on whether or not that the existing building roof is going to be raised or not. And I appreciate the applicant's desire to pump this to site plan, but I, I don't think that that's appropriate. Because part of the proofs is what the impact is to your surrounding neighbors. And increasing the height of the building in an area that's less than 50 feet from a property line has the potential to have a negative impact on the neighbor. So I think that's appropriate to be discussed now. So if they're committing that they're not going to raise the roof, that's one thing. But if they are, then we should discuss it further.
In the area of the basketball court, so Ms. Flores, if you could put that plan up. In the area of the basketball court, the maximum additional height would be seven feet. If that were to be permitted, that would be the maximum additional height above the building that's there. And I would point out, I would point out that that is our farm neighbor who had asked us to make a commitment on the record and I did, and I also memorialized it with a letter. That's Mr. Robinowitz owns the farm there. We had made a commitment to him to have a full farm buffer on our property and also to put on fencing. He had asked that we have fencing to make certain that the boys didn't visit his, his horses. So that is what, our neighbor is, is an active farm. And the maximum increase in the building height would be seven feet, but it would be subject to this. I'm not asking that we approve the seven feet, it would be subject to the board's approval when we came back with site plan, but that would.
But that, but you're saying you're going to provide a full farm buffer, but you can't.
No.
You don't have 50 feet. So.
Yes, we have 36 feet behind the building. That's correct.
Right. So you're not 50 feet from the farm and now you're exacerbating the situation. I don't think that that's, whether it's five feet or what?
What if they put a 15 foot berm?
I mean, ultimately it's up to you. You know what I mean? I'm just saying that I don't think that this item is appropriate to be deferred to site plan. I think it needs to be addressed as part of the site, as part of the use variance. So if you're amenable to them increasing the height of the building in an area that's less than 50 feet from a farm, it's up to you guys, you know, it, you know, I would defer to Sherry to what can go back there and, you know, survive and provide the requisite buffer that, you know, between, because as you know, it's not, the buffer is not protecting the school, it's protecting the farm. So while, you know, this particular farmer may be okay with it. You know, there may be somebody else that takes over that property at some point in the future. I don't know. But it's relief that's necessary and I think it's completely appropriate to discuss now. I would not recommend deferring it to site plan.
I agree with you, Jen.
Yeah.
So my, on behalf of the applicant, the request then would be that the maximum height increase be seven feet, which I believe would take the building to 24 feet. I think we're at 17 feet now. That the maximum height increase would be seven feet. And that we would agree to be responsible for a landscape berm, a landscape area with berming and plantings to the satisfaction of this board as a condition of granting that relief.
Is that okay with you, Jen? You're muted. You're, you're muted, Jen.
Sorry. I would say I would defer to, I would defer to Sherry on what can go back there ultimately. You know, but if the board is comfortable with that, then I would take no exception to it. Just noting that, you know, we don't typically grant relief from a farm buffer.
Yeah.
I also, you know, again, I haven't been on site for this. From, I do know the site somewhat, the back. I don't believe it's, you know, oak trees and beautiful woods back there. They're probably like locusts and cherry and other scrubby kind of stuff. However, it is tall. So, you know, I don't know how great of a buffer we're going to get. You know, I don't know if you're going to want to remove and, and put a berm, a planted berm in there. It'd be hard to say exactly what we can do back there.
Sherry, I, this is a pre-existing that they won't remodel. We, we don't have the 50 feet there. So a lot of it's going to depend on how wide of an area you have to put a berm in. Because don't forget, you got drainage that you got to worry about.
Sure. Yeah. So I mean, just, you know, we could certainly spot in plants, but it, you know, it's certainly not going to be a thick buffer.
Mr. Chair and Ms. Bureau, as, as you're discussing this, I have information that was just shared with me. The maximum height that we would need to increase would be four feet, not the seven feet. We could make it work with a four foot lift over the basketball court. So I hope that that would.
Can you zoom in on that? Because I thought it said 14 feet.
Yeah. So that's all averages. It's actually the wall space to the roof. You can tell actually better right here. If you see the existing roof line is just below the main roof of this kind of entry center area, and we're just going the two feet above. So the actual roof is actually only being raised about four feet from here to here. And I apologize, we, everything was kind of measured to the center line of the roof to show the roof height average. So it's really only four feet, even though it shows a 14 foot addition. That's like from the plate height to the roof. So it's not, it's not measuring properly on the plans. So I apologize for the confusion on that. But you can tell clearly here the relationship of the existing to the proposed at the roof height. And it actually kind of, it actually matches this left side of the building. It's pretty much the same roof height of the left side already. It is obviously a smaller roof on this side and it's a, the gable end is the other way. So I apologize for the confusion. It's not seven feet. It's, it's about four feet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What are we going to propose here?
Your applicant's proposing permission to increase the roof height by four feet. And to make a commitment to work with Sherry and your professionals on appropriate landscaping scheme behind the building. But you've screened that portion of the building.
Is that acceptable to you, Sherry?
Yeah. I mean, I have no issue with that myself. We could, we could definitely look on, again, we'll go out there in the field, see how much room we have to fit in the under story area to plant in. And yeah, do the best we can.
I'm good.
Okay. Charlie?
The only comment that I have, Mr. Chair, is if any berming is proposed and that impacts the proposer, the existing well, just making sure, you know, the appropriate changes are made to those. And if they need to get relocated, you know, Louis locating it to them a spot where they are respecting all separation distances to stormwater and septic.
Bob, that answer your question?
I'm still contemplating, sir. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, Wawa Route 33. I'm thinking, you know, the movie theater, right? I'm thinking, you know, every time we've done something like this, you know, we always impact our neighbor. And unless we do it right, I don't want in the future, like Jen says, impacting a future neighbor.
I agree.
Okay. I'll, I'll make this commitment to you. We, I went to the farm neighbor in Mr. Sam Robinowitz. I went to him. And I presented the plan to him and he gave me permission to then state that he was satisfied when we made our representations on the record the last time. I'm very comfortable telling you that I will go again to Mr. Robinowitz and specifically identify to him what we've requested of this board and that securing his, his consent to that additional four feet could be a condition of approval. I will go back to him again. He may even be on this evening listening, but I'll go back to him.
You know, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It goes back to the basic premise. That's a legacy building. We're now modifying that legacy building, which now changes its condition. Right? And now that we're changing its condition, it, you know, things, you know, it's a, it's a domino effect.
Yep.
And this is something that surprised me and did not come up at the last meeting. Jen, unmute please.
You're absolutely correct. It did not come up at the last meeting. I think this was in response, and I don't mean to speak for Mr. Pate, but I think this was in response to the questions about specifically identifying what that building was going to be used for. And so they, it appears to me that they took a harder look and then once they put the gym in there, figured they needed to raise the roof. But yes, you're right. This was not brought up at the last meeting. We didn't discuss this at all. As of the last meeting, the existing building was going to remain as is.
This may be a foolish question, but when they put that berm in the back of this building, is that going to cause drainage onto the farm? And also back towards their property since it's only going to be that close? Do berms do that? I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
I don't think we're going to berm in the back though, because if we're going to keep the trees in that strip, it's not possible to do both in such a small area.
You're probably going to have to do under story plantings. But there again, it depends on what's back there. It could be a bunch of scrub cherries and, you know, locusts. We don't know what's there. So.
Here's what I'd like to propose, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to defer this further until Sherry can get back there. Take a look. I mean, we've had, this is the second bite at the apple. You know, we, we truly indicated and Jen and I in the last meeting that, you know, the disintegration of that particular legacy building, you know, was probably the optimal choice. Increasing the footprint of maybe the main building to make up whatever is lost would satisfy a lot of the conditions. But this applicant has come back. They cut down on the main building. They want to use the legacy building. And now they're changing the conditions of the legacy building. You know, it, it, it's, I don't see it. I don't see it. I think it can be better. I don't, you know, Jen?
I, I mean, I, I don't disagree. That was my initial thoughts when we were at the last meeting that something could be, you know, that building could go away in its entirety or a portion thereof. I do know that the applicant looked into that scenario. It's my understanding that it would be extremely expensive to deal with that or at least cut that building in half as opposed to reduce the footprint of a building that has yet to be constructed. But again, it's up to you, you know, like the, by modifying that building, they require additional relief in that area. If you're not comfortable with that relief, you absolutely are within your rights to say no. But, you know, I would defer back to Mr. Pate to discuss that because that was the initial recommendation was to address the building coverage specifically with the existing building, which would then mitigate some buffer issues that we had as well. And that obviously is not what we're seeing tonight. So can you give us a little information about how we got to where we are?
Charlie, I can also tell you that I have during this discussion received permission, Mr. Say, that if this modification to the building is offensive to the board then we'll withdraw the request to increase the height. We will certainly leave the commitment that there'll be no, no classrooms and we'll make, leave the commitment that we'll do facade modifications to make it an attractive campus. But the, the, the building that is there is a valuable building. It's in good condition. It, it, it has a facade that's begging for some treatment, but it's a good solid building. And it, it has a value that's in the seven figures. And tearing down and destroying a building that is good, in good condition of that value by a not-for-profit organization is, is very hard to accept. It was for that reason that your applicant made the substantial reduction of the principle of the new building to get under the, building a lesser building doesn't, isn't throwing away, throwing away value. So that was the way, the way they approached it.
Ken, just a quick question for you. Is, is there any state statute or regulations that says a, a school has to provide a gymnasium or recreation building or mandatory like? a gymnasium or recreation building or mandatory like allotment of recreation during a school day?
None that I'm aware of, Mr. Conliff. None at all.
But as far as, you know, the applicant's history with other school facilities and other municipalities, it's not atypical for there to be some allotment of recreation.
The only recreation that's creating this height issue is, is the basketball court.
Yeah. So what I'm, I guess what I'm getting at, Ken, is if the building were to be eliminated, the applicant would still be proposing some type of recreation. And it would either have to, what, take place inside the new building? Or it would be outside somewhere that could occur during normal hours of operation for the school, which could be from seven to ten PM at night?
The, the school is operate, does operate as late as eleven o'clock with most of the students leaving by nine, nine forty-five.
Yes, I, I just want to, for the boards, the applicant is providing a dedicated indoor area and has agreed with the building that's shown, repurposing it to no outside recreation. So I think that is an important thing for the board to consider with the application too, especially with given the hours of operation for the school use.
And, and we will withdraw the request to increase the height of the building. We'll figure out how to work the building as is.
Mr. Pape?
Yes, sir.
A question for your architect. Did, did they go in and do measurements in there? Is there attic space above that area where the basketball's going in now?
Sorry, I am muted. The height still really isn't adequate to the underside of, like, i- if you would incorporate that attic space. So yes, we, we could open it up. We have to change the structure a little bit of the roof to accommodate a higher ceiling in that space. It still just doesn't, doesn't lend itself necessarily to the height of a basketball court.
Yeah, but, but what standard are you using? You know, are, are you, are you needing a, I guess, the, the proper standard height in this? Or can you just make do because, you know, it, it's, it's only for, for the school to use. It's not going to be any competition there and it's not going to have to be any recommended, you know, standard, you know, so.
Mr. Chairman, we'll make it work. We, we would.
Yeah.
I do not want the board to be struggling with this issue. I appreciate that, how much you're bringing it to our attention. It's become crystal clear that is a concern. We'll withdraw the request to increase the height. We'll make it work and we'll, and we'll keep our commitment to having a complete design of non-classroom activities in the building.
Okay, okay. Is there any other questions of the architect from the board?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Board, board members, any questions?
Ask around, Chairman, please.
Yeah, I, I need to, I need to get my screen back. There we go. Mr. Stanton?
No, Chairman.
Mr. Hughes?
No, sir. I'm good for now.
Mr. Martin?
I'm good, but I do want to address the berming and all the screening when we do the final site plan. For now, I'm good.
Mr. Saya?
Jose?
No.
I'm on mute, man.
No, I'm away.
All right, go on mute. Mr. Chairman, I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Moretti?
No, sir. I'm good at this time.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, get everybody.
Did we lose Mr. Kanter?
I, yeah, where's Mr. Kanter?
I don't see him.
I don't either. Knew I was missing somebody. Hey, Glenn, you there?
Give me a minute. Yeah, he's logged back in. Give him, give him a minute.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes, sir. Are you there?
Yeah, internet problems. I'm here.
Okay.
Cell phone.
Do, do you have any questions of the architect?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Jen and Paul answered all the questions.
Okay, okay, Mr. Pape?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. Our fourth and final witness this evening is Christine Cofone, who has been waiting for all of these facts to be in front of you before presenting the plan and testimony. There we go. Ms. Cofone, if you could be sworn for this application, please?
Of course.
Hey, Chris, raise your right hand, please. You've thrown a testimony you'll give this evening and be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. Self, be God.
Yes, I do.
Have your full name for the record, please.
It's Christine Nazzaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O. Cofone is C-O-F-O-N-E. Business address is one twenty-five Half Mile Road, Suite two hundred, Red Bank, New Jersey, zero seven seven zero one.
Your witness, Mr. Pape.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cofone, notwithstanding that the record this evening for other applications includes your credentials, please place them on the record before beginning your testimony.
Yes, of course. Very briefly, I'm a licensed professional planner. I am about to start my twenty-fifth year of practicing as such. I have testified here in Howell and before about four hundred other planning and zoning boards throughout the state. I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services and my license are current and valid and intact.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you, Chairman.
I'm gonna ask that Ms. Cofone has listened to the testimony on November thirtieth and tonight. And she's also spent considerable time working with the applicant's representatives and professionals. I'm gonna ask that she make her presentation to you in a narrative fashion, describing what she did to prepare for the hearing and just taking us through what the necessary proofs are and the facts upon which she relies. And then to draw her professional opinions as to how this board is entitled to grant the variance relief that your applicant requests. Ms. Cofone, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Pape. So yes, in preparing for tonight, I had an opportunity to review the application package and the submission documents that our team provided to review your board professionals' review letters, to participate in numerous conference calls and team Zoom meetings from our team to get ready to review the revisions that we did to reduce the size of the building, eliminate some variance relief, comply with the buffers, all the things that Mr. Zugner spoke about earlier this evening. We are here seeking a use variance despite the fact that there is a school on the property. There has historically been a school on the property for decades. The fact that we are proposing another school building on the site, we do need D-one use variance for that as Ms. Beam properly points out in her review letter, we need not only a use variance for, to have the school, but we also need a use variance for the two structures on the one lot. Because this is a school and inherently beneficial use, in my opinion, the applicant is not subject to the Medici enhanced standards and doesn't have to demonstrate particular suitability, but rather the applicant is governed by the SECA balancing test. And that's a four-pronged test that the board has to go through to identify the, substantiate the proofs for the grant of the variance. So the first prong of the SECA balancing test is to identify the public interest at stake. And schools have certainly been determined by the courts in New Jersey to be an inherently beneficial use as they promote the general welfare. Therefore, we don't have to demonstrate like you hear on some other applications, particular suitability, because they presumptively, the site presumptively satisfies the particular suitability as this is a use that promotes the general welfare and is inherently beneficial. The next prong of the SECA balancing test is to identify any detrimental effects that would ensue from the grants of the variance and then determine whether or not you can reduce any of those detrimental effects by imposing reasonable conditions on the site. So certainly I did have an opportunity to listen to some of the concerns that were raised by the board members as well as some members of the public, not just tonight, but last evening, as last evening this application was heard. And I think that there are a number of things that the board can impose as reasonable conditions here that will safeguard against or mitigate against any negative impacts resulting from the development of this property. For starters, some of the things we heard was that there was a representation that no students drive to the state, to the site and that no students will live on site. And those can certainly be conditions of approval. In addition, we are going to have a compliant buffer everywhere except where that existing building is. And certainly the existence of lawful pre-existing structures is justification for a variance or a departure from ordinance standards. But some of the other conditions that I think are really important are architecturally. And I know Ms. Flores presented some testimony earlier and she, she used the words a higher tint. And then we also, in working with the neighbors, use the word dark shaded glass and to have blackout shades on the windows. And I think that those are also things that the applicant can impose as reasonable conditions of approval to minimize any impact on our neighbors. I think it's obviously important to the board and important to the applicant as well. We certainly want to be a good neighbor. We've taken great care to try to meet with our neighbors and to come back to the board with a plan that we is find acceptable to the board. And I think that all of those things can be imposed as reasonable conditions, which would certainly substantiate that burden of proof for the SECA balancing test. The other thing is, I know we just had a long colloquy on the architecture of the new building. And I think you, what you heard is a willingness on behalf of the applicant to work with the board and the board professionals to make sure that we do comply at site plan. This is not, if, if this gets approved tonight, unlike other uses where you hear the site plan and the use variance in one night, here, the board, the applicant has to come back. If the board were to move favorably on this application, the applicant comes back before the board. So there is another opportunity down the road for the applicants who work with the board's professionals on things like architecture to do, to break up the things that Jen had mentioned earlier, breaking up those walls and, and bringing down the appearance of the building. Those, not only are those things important, they're actually in your ordinance, so we're required to do them. So there is an obligation on our part to do those things. You heard a willingness on behalf of our team and we certainly intend to do those things working collaboratively with your professionals. And certainly we can accept that, I believe, as well as a condition of approval. So that, in my opinion, is a number of conditions of approval that can be imposed on this application, which helped me conclude as a planner that there would be no substantial detriment. And that's really the last prong of the SECA balancing test, is you weigh the positive and negative attributes and criteria and determine whether the grants of the variance would cause a substantial detriment to the public good. And, and I remind the board, when you're doing that balancing act, the criteria in the land use law does not ask you to have that there be no detriment resulting from the variance, just that the benefits of the grant of the variance are outweigh, outweigh the detriment. And here, I think that this is certainly, it's, it's a great school, a, a great option for, you know, the, the children in the community to have this type of school here in such close physical proximity to the dormitories that were also created recently in Lakewood. So I think that this is really, the other thing I should back up and say that I wanted to talk about was the sidewalks. We, we talked about that, I think, last month, but I know the board had some concern about sidewalks. And I think the applicant also indicated a willingness to provide sidewalks, which is also important on this site as it is a school. So with that being said, I think when you look at the purpose of the ARE two zone, because whether or not we are here for an inherently beneficial use or the not inherently beneficial use as a board, you have to consider what the purposes of the ARE two zone is. And one of the stated purposes of that zoning district is to minimize the impacts of development in areas located outside the centers identified in the township's master plan. So I think when you look at that goal and you want to minimize the impacts of development, naturally as planners, we would be guided by then developing a site that's already an existing and improved property, which the subject property is. As, as you heard testimony earlier, the school has been here for decades. So I think while not a permitted use in the zone, we are certainly consistent with that stated purpose of the ARE two zone. Moreover, there are goals in the master plan that talk about providing a stable and diverse community through the provision of a balanced land use pattern. And I think allowing this school to expand in this location contributes to providing a stable and diverse community. So with that being said, I, I don't want to say that there is a lack of impacts here from a planning point of view. What I think there is, is a lack of negative impacts that cannot be managed or cannot be balanced by the imposition of reasonable conditions. I think here you have a situation where you have an applicant who really wants to develop a property and have a plan that does fit in with the neighborhood and does consider those impacts to the neighborhood. And that's why we took such time to prepare for this hearing and to go through what those conditions would be so that we could mitigate any negative impacts associated with the development of this property. So I hope that the board moves favorably on this application and appreciates the efforts on behalf of, your professionals have been amazing in giving us guidance at helping us get to a, a point where we've reduced the variance relief required. And I'm confident that we can continue to, to work towards that end to have the property approved when we get to the site plan phase. But at, at this point, we're here just for the use and just for the use variance. And I think that there is certainly enough testimony in the record for the board to move favorably in conjunction with the use variance proofs that are statutorily required for the grant of this application.
Mr. Chair, I have no further examination of Ms. Cofone. Thank you.
Jennifer?
I agree with the testimony. A school is inherently beneficial. And so the, the evaluation under the SECA test is the appropriate statutory requirement. I feel like Ms. Cofone went through each of the prongs of the SECA test in detail and in, on balance, that the positive outweighs the negative. I do feel like the applicant has, you know, made some positive changes to the application from when we ju, we heard the application initially in November to complying with the building coverage, you know, being sensitive to the neighbor and providing the, the darkened windows and the blackout shades so as not to create a negative impact into the neighbor's home, working with Sherri to supplement the buffer, especially behind the existing building where we don't quite hit that fifty feet, the removal of the request to increase the height of that existing building. So I do feel like on balance, the applicant has met its burden and I would take no exception if the board were to act favorably on the application.
Charlie?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Okay, board members. Mr. Stanton?
I'm satisfied. No question.
I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Martin?
I'm good right now, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Saya?
I think we're good, sir.
Okay, Mr. Moretti?
I have no questions.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Oh, nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Rusko?
No.
Mr. Kanter? You're, you're muted, Mr. Kanter. You're there, but you're still muted.
I'm good. Can you hear me now?
Okay.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, at, at this time, I'm gonna take a motion to open the public.
Chairman, I make a motion to open the public.
Do you have a motion to open the public? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Martin. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, Eileen, we'll open the public for questions and comments at this time. You're muted, Eileen. There you go.
At this time, the board chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public to ask questions or comments on the application. Please use the raise your hand feature. You'll be brought into the hearing one at a time. You will need to be sworn in. Give your name and. You will need to be sworn in, give your name and address, and you do need audio and video. Just give us a minute and we will bring someone in. We have someone named Laura coming into the meeting. You need to turn on your audio and video.
Go ahead, sir.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Lawrence. My name's Lawrence Gilinski.
Mr. Gilinski, before you start, we need to swear you in, please.
Yes.
All right, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give tonight to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self of God?
Yes, I do.
And again, sir, your name for the record?
Lawrence Gilinski. G I L. G I L. I N S K Y.
And your address, please.
Three, five, nine Kent Road.
You may proceed.
Okay, I just have some general comments. The, our neighborhood has changed a great deal in the last 20 years with traffic going to Walmart, Goldmont, whatever. But there used to be a quiet little school that you hardly knew was there, a Solomon Schechter School. It had maybe 50 students. And it was open five days a week, you know, six to eight hours a day. And now we have a school that about 150 students that's open 12 hours a day, six days a week. And it's soon going to have 400 students and staff. And how can this not impact our neighborhood? And I'm just down the street from it. Now, I met with Rabbi Weinberger over the weekend. He seems like a really nice fellow. And I'm sure that the students are good students, good kids. But still, this is really not beneficial to Howell because there's no Howell kids who are going to the school. That's number one. Number two, in about 7.8 acres on well, septic and wetlands, you're going to put all these people? You know, and we have very shallow water table. It just, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. Plus, you know, traffic has already increased. I mean, I know how many people are going to the school now because the bridge is out. So everybody has to come around my corner. And in any given half hour off peak, there's at least nine, 10 cars. So, you know, that's just going to increase. And as you can tell, I'm really not excited about this idea. And I just, you know, thought I'd share that.
Any, do you have any questions of the applicant's witnesses or just the comments?
Well, just the comments.
Okay. Okay, sir. Very well noted.
How do I get out of here?
Eileen.
Hey, we do have one other member of the public coming in. Give us just one minute. This is Eric Johnson coming in. Mr. Johnson, you are moved into the meeting. We're going to give him a minute in case he got disconnected. While we wait for Mr. Johnson, does any other member of the public have any questions or comments on this application? Please use the raise your hand feature. We have Mr. Johnson and Mr. Jacobitz in now at the meeting. You both need to turn on video and audio. And we'll start with Mr. Johnson.
There he is.
It's Jacobitz.
Mr. Troply.
Yes, I'm just waiting for Mr. Johnson to come in.
Oh, he's not, oh, okay.
Right here. I don't.
You there, Mr. Johnson?
Dark video.
This is the second time I tried to join one of these meetings and while I was waiting to be brought on, I was logged off. I was cut off. That happened on the first meeting, so I didn't, never got to say anything that time. I did get to speak last time. Thank you for waiting.
No problem, Mr. Johnson. Let's swear you in again for tonight's meeting. My raise your right hand, swear the testimony you give tonight to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self of God.
Yes, sir.
And sir, your address, please, your name and address.
My name is Eric Johnson. I live at 373 Kent Road. I am the immediately adjacent property owner to the proposed school.
Yes, sir.
All right, I have a couple of questions first, and then I do have a prepared statement that I'm going to read. First question, probably to Mr. Zugner, regarding the buffer between, especially between my property and the proposed school. I believe the setback, in addition to that 50-foot buffer, correct, the required setback would be in addition to the buffer.
So, wait, there's a setback to the building. There's also the buffer and farm buffer requirement. And I think it was part of testimony as to the fact that we were not putting the building setback on top of the buffer.
Correct. So we would have a 50-foot buffer on our side yard and then a required 30-foot setback, I believe, correct? And that, I believe that setback is one of the variance requests?
Yes.
Okay, to be reduced to what?
The total dimension from the property line to the building on the northerly side is 60 feet.
Right, so it would be reduced to a 10-foot setback in addition to that buffer. Now, the,
Can I, can I just, the 10-foot in addition to the buffer?
Well, the setback is supposed to be in addition to the buffer.
Agreed. I 100% agree with you. That's why I'm not understanding what Lewis is talking about.
Right.
You have to have the buffer and then the setback on top of the buffer. That's how our ordinance reads. So Lou, how are you getting a 10-foot setback?
I guess, maybe I'm a little bit confused as to exactly what we're talking about. So we have a 50-foot buffer.
Yes.
And the, and then typically you determine the setback to the building from the 50-foot buffer.
From the, from the 50-foot line. So, you know, I'm not 100% sure which lot is yours, Mr. Johnson.
It's lot 21.
So that's immediately to the north. So that's the existing building that they're proposing is, so you're 80 feet off that property line, Lou?
We're 60 feet off that property line.
So then that would require relief for the setback.
Correct, which I believe was.
Yes. Correct? I see Mr. Pike nodding. I'm just.
That's correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure we were clear because I know, I understood what you were asking. I just thought it became a little muddled.
No, sorry.
That was my understanding. Because of the changes that were made since the last meeting, which I obviously did not have an opportunity to review since they were just brought in tonight. I was just confirming that that was still the case, that there would only be 60 feet there instead of what would normally be 80 feet, including the buffer. Now, in that, in that buffer, the landscape buffer, apparently nobody has come out here from the board to, to look at the site as of yet. The, the trees, what trees do exist between my house and the, the existing house on that property where the school would be. They're mostly maple trees. It is not something that you're going to be able to get any sort of understory plantings or conifers or anything to grow in there. It's just not suitable for that. Now, I'm also, I believe there is also something in the ordinance about burns. So there's, you know, there's nothing shown on the plan for that. The, the proposed classroom or the proposed windows that would be on the first floor of that building would still have pretty good views and light, light leakage onto our property. The, you know, you're talking basically two and a half stories of a roughly 200 or so foot long wall, a pretty monolithic structure, which would be, our front door actually faces that side. Our front door is on the south side of the house. The front door, dining room, living room, sunroom. We'd be coming out facing that monolithic wall out there with nothing to screen it essentially. And even if you planted some pine trees, spruces, whatever type of conifers or something in there, they're not going to come in high enough. They're not going to be high enough for another 15 years to provide any type of the screening there. So anyway, that's another point I wanted to make. Something was brought up about outdoor recreation. They do have outdoor recreation there now. They play football right behind the trees, behind our back property line. Occasionally, they've, some of the students have actually come over and played on our back lawn behind our pool area. You know, when I confronted them, they said, oh, we thought it was school property. So there is, they do have outdoor recreation back there existing. I don't know if that's proposed to continue there or not. Now, I will, like I said, I do have a proposed statement that pretty much covers, a written statement that really covers the things that I want to address. So if you could bear with me. We have been taxpaying residents here in Howell for almost 27 years now on this site. As Mr. Gilinski mentioned, it's a quiet neighborhood. You know, the, the school that's back there now is, is not, you know, it's not affecting us. So anyway, been here for over 26 years with my wife. We raised our four children here. About 35 years ago, while pursuing my certification as a landscape architect, I was actually employed by the municipal planning firm that was a consultant for both Howell and Lakewood at that time. So I worked with the master plans and the zoning maps for both towns. And from time to time, I actually represented the firm of planning board meetings. Subject property, as you know, is located in the ARE2 zone, agricultural rural estate zone. The ordinance states, which you've heard a number of times, and I know you're familiar with it, but the ARE2 zone is to minimize the impacts of development in areas located outside of the centers identified in the master plan. The goals include not only the preservation of rural and agricultural uses and preservation of rural character, but in addition to act as a buffer between zones of greater development and the ARE3, 4, and 6 zones. The zone does not permit schools, as we know. This area of town maintains a pretty rural character. Bring this down. Predominantly multi-acre lots, including a good number of horse farms nearby. The requested use variance with other requested reliefs would permit a non-conforming use in the form of a two-story or more school, because I believe it would end up being more than two stories, with over 200 feet of facade along Kent Road and over 200 feet of facade along the abutting residential property, being mine. Regardless of how architecturally attractive the building is made, it's still a monolithic structure adjacent to a residential property. The intrusion is further aggravated by the requested reductions to the front and side yard setbacks and the increase in the permitted lot coverage. This would not only destroy the aesthetic character of the agricultural rural neighborhood and intrude on the solitude and privacy of its neighbors, but it would also provide no economic or educational benefit to the township of Howell or its residents. The existing school on the subject property, the old Solomon Schechter Academy, is a small, one-story structure that is well-hidden and back on the flag lot. It's barely visible from Kent Road, behind the trees and the two existing houses, and has little impact on the neighboring properties. The proposed use would vastly increase the number of students and their activities on the site, which includes some very loud celebrations that may go on until 11 or 12 at night. The proposed school would also result in light spillage from outdoor site lighting, as well as probably still, excuse me, from windows, as well as school buzzers that sound until 10 o'clock at night. The existing school, which had apparently been granted to use variance approximately 35 years ago, was granted that variance on the one flag lot that it occupies. Just because the owners purchased additional adjacent lots, it should not automatically grant them the right to apply that variance to those properties as well. A developer could then continue to purchase additional contiguous properties with the intent and sole purpose being to expand an existing use variance to an increasingly larger area. We might as well encourage spot zoning along with creeping subdivisions and other destructive zoning concepts. Of course, as a next-door neighbor, I'm also personally concerned about the direct effects that a school or any similar building in use would have on my property and my family. The back wall of the two-story plus structure would face directly at our front porch, dining room, living room, sunroom, master bedroom, and two other bedrooms, in addition to our swimming pool area. We would lose all sense of privacy day and night, six days a week, year round. And school activity occurs until 11 or, until 10 or 11 each night, sometimes ending with honking bus horns. There's also a strong potential for food waste odor from dumpsters, as well as the attraction of pests such as rats and raccoons to the dumpsters. We've already had problems with them in the past. Raccoons even killed two of our ducks. And we don't need the increased attractive nuisance for these pests. Excuse me. The application requires a lot coverage variance because it does not fit on the site. It requires a front yard setback variance because it doesn't fit on the site. It requires a side yard setback variance because it doesn't fit on the site. According to the engineer's report of 1125, certain buffer requirements may also not be met. The proposed development requires a special septic system enhancement or pretreatment system, which is questionable if it'll even work because it doesn't fit on the site. And the application requires a use variance because it does not fit the parameters of the master plan or the ARE2 zone. It's attempting to squeeze the proverbial 10 pounds of material into a five-pound back. So I then refer to section five of the engineer's report of 1125 relating to required proofs for variance relief, where I disagree with the planner. As for positive criteria, I've heard no evidence that the proposed use expansion serves the general welfare of the township, welfare of the township, more appropriately than a permitted use would. There's also no special reason, neither an unreasonable hardship nor a furthering of any purpose of the municipal land use law. It would provide no redeeming value to Howell Township either economic, educational, functional, or aesthetic. With regard to negative criteria, the proposal does impair the intent of the zoning ordinance and master plan. Simply by virtue of all the variances required to accommodate the proposal, it defies the basic principle, and this is in quotes, the basic principle that municipalities should make zoning decisions by ordinance rather than by variance. Additionally, it would negatively impact the public good by causing damage to the character of the neighborhood. It would also establish an extremely dangerous precedent, which would allow for continued uncontrolled random growth throughout the township of Howell. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm not opposed to change. Change is inevitable, but our master plan and zoning ordinance have been designed to try to make sure that the change occurs in a sensible and organized manner. The proposed use, whether you want to call it an expansion, but I don't believe it's an expansion because it's on different lots than the original use. Anyway, setting it. Anyway, setting it dangerous precedent, not only for this little part of Southern Howell, but for the rest of the township as well. I may be one of only a few who feel that they would be adversely affected by this particular application for zoning relief. But what about the next application and the one after that? We as a township would be gaining nothing that could justify subverting the zoning ordinance and master plan for this application. There's no economic advantage where the township would benefit by the addition of a good tax ratable or even an educational facility for residents of Howell. We would only be systematically destroying exactly what our master plan and zoning ordinances were designed to preserve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further?
Mister Chairman, you got Mister Andre Jackamets, that's.
Yeah, I, I know. Yes, here.
Okay, Mister Jackamets, would you raise your right hand, please, to swear the testimony you give up? That you'll give this, uh, evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
That's right. We have your name, please, spell your last name and your address, please.
Andre Jackamets, J.A.C.K.A.M.E.E.S. Thirty-two Irene, like the woman's name Boulevard, Howell.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Well, um, Eric actually stole my thunder, so, uh, I, I, I will start by saying, uh, uh, to the chairman and, and the board, uh, congratulations to the new board members and the swearing-in. Uh, I, I know that we'll have a, a great team, uh, in Howell uh, with, with, with the upcoming years, so congratulations to every, uh, new sworn-in, uh, member. Okay, so, uh, uh, Ms. Katie Flores, uh, she, she mentioned in her, um, in her testimony that, uh, the school would be an asset, and I'm quoting her, asset to Howell and the neighborhood, unquote. And basically I was just hoping that she could follow up. She's not here, I, I imagine, uh, how so? How, how would it be an asset to Howell? And how would it be, uh, an asset to the neighborhood? And I would just would like to hear from her. So that, that was part one, and part two.
Let, let me bring her back. Eileen. You muted, Eileen.
He's here. She just has to unmute herself.
Okay. Ms. Flores, you wanna, there you go.
Yep, sorry. Um, hello, and thank you. Um, yeah, thank you as well. Um, I, I said that was what I believe. Um, I believe that the building is a nice building. Um, and it was already mentioned that a school in general, um, is always inherently beneficial use, um, to a community.
Art, you know, deep answer. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Um, my, my, uh, next question, um, uh, is, is, is to Ken, uh, Pape, Pat? If I'm pronouncing your name correctly, uh, please forgive, um. Um, so my understanding is, it's roughly like four hundred young guys, school, student, all boys. Uh, and it's a basketball court and it's all indoors and just riding by any school, uh, be it whatever type of school it is, it, it, it just, it just stretches the plausibility factor that four hundred guys, boys, students are all going to be playing basketball between, let's just say, nine o'clock for early gym till nine-thirty PM. I, I think, I mean, common sense would, would say some of them are going to have an outside game. And, uh, you know, frisbee or baseball or just anything that guys do, street hockey. So I don't see any like spillover that there's outdoor activities. And, and for boys, it almost sounds like they want to play baseball. They, they want to, uh, play, uh, outdoor, you know, energetic games. And, and with four hundred kids, students, I don't know how you're gonna get them all to, to schedule playing basketball. And actually, I think it's in a, in a, in a, in an arena with the, with the ceiling at what, thirty-five feet? That's, that's, uh, um, that, that sounds like a little iffy for me. So, you know, maybe that there will be, uh, an outside field, uh, to play that hasn't been, uh, I don't know, found yet or, or whatever. What do you think? Just basketball? Mister.
I'm the attorney for the applicant and not a witness who testifies. Um, I've not called on to provide factual elements of the, of, of the testimony, but I can tell you that the representations that were placed on the record by the applicant and the applicant's professionals have all been accepted by the applicant. Their commitments that are made by the applicant to the board. And we know that the board relies upon those being truthful and complete. Those are our statements. We're very comfortable living with them.
Solid answer. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, that's about it, board. Thank you so much for, uh, taking the time out to, to answer my questions.
Thank you, sir.
I'll, I'll mute now.
Eileen, is there anybody else in the public?
Are there any other members of the public wishing to ask questions or comments on this application? Please raise your hand now. Otherwise, the chairman's going to close the public portion of the hearing.
Anybody, Eileen?
I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, can I have a motion to close public?
Make a motion to close the public, Mister Chairman.
Motion by Mister Seah.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mister Cantor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, see and run. Okay, Mister Pate, you want to do a summation here? Or address any of the comments that were made?
I do, Mister Chen, and I would be brief. The applicant relies upon the representations that the professionals have made on behalf of the applicant. And the applicant relies on the representations that were made by Jack Mandelbaum, the authorized representative of the, the school. This is not appropriate. This is not a project that does not fit. The use of both variance relief is an important tool that the board is permitted to use. What we have done is we have made certain that all of the elements of the plan, stormwater management, septic system set aside, and most importantly, a safe means of ingress and egress. Three elements of good design and good safety were, were followed. We have, all, th- those elements of the plan have been incorporated into the plan. As we indicated, we worked with your professionals and especially with your fire officials to make certain that we had secured their, their approvals or, or their recommendations. What, it's not a project that is overbuilt in any way. It is a unique property that has had a school for nearly forty years. It has grown over the years. This is a measured growth. It is a growth that is commensurate with the community's growth. And with all of the landscape commitments that are made and the architectural commitments that are made and the shielded lighting commitments that are, are made and the safety features that the applicant has presented to the board and the fact that it is an inherently beneficial use. Your applicant has earned the relief. We have much to do with the board to finalize the site plan, to make certain that the landscaping provides the protections that our neighbors require, to make certain that the design of the building provides the protections that our neighbors require. But for purposes of use bearings, for an inherently beneficial use, I'm very comfortable saying your applicant has gone above and beyond what is necessary to give the board the, the tools to grant the relief. And we respectfully ask that the board consider granting this relief favorably with a commitment that we return and work with you on the site plan. Thank you.
Charlie, any closing comments?
Nothing, Mister Chair.
Jennifer?
The only thing I just want to be clear is that the applicant's here for a D-one use variance. They're not here for a D-two expansion of a non-conforming use. And I think there was some kind of representation in some of the comments that it was a expansion and the requirements that the applicant needs to put on the record. Um, this is a, a straight D-one use variance, but it's for an inherently beneficial use. And just by the nature of being inherently beneficial, it meets the positive criteria. So they don't have to go through particular suitability. They don't have to go through the positive criteria or the goals of zoning because by its nature as inherently beneficial, it automatically meets that criteria. And that's why when we listened to the testimony, it was just the SECA balancing test, which is looking at the negative, the positive and negative impacts associated with the application. So, you know, number one, it is not uncommon to have an application that has more than one lot. So the fact that it has more than one lot is not, you know, it, it uncommon or makes the relief or the application any different than what's before you. And number two, because it's inherently beneficial, the burden is a little different than it would be if it was not an inherent, inherently beneficial use. So I don't want there to be any confusion like they didn't provide information. They're not required to because it's a school and has been determined by the courts on numerous occasions as being inherently beneficial. And I would kind of punt that to Ron to, to verify my legal prowess.
From my perspective as the board's attorney, I would tell you that the prongs of the SECA test, which Jen has put on the record and Christina testified to, is what's controlling in this case. Jennifer is one hundred percent correct. Schools are deemed inherently beneficial use. And as inherently beneficial use, the applicant's not, is not required to prove the positive criteria. So what the board has to determine is whether or not has the applicant made a test, made the inherently beneficial test. I'll leave that to you. There's testimony on each and every prong and, and I might say in some detail, as well as, um, substantial testimony on satisfying the negative criteria, which is required here. So other than that, particular suitability is really not something that is, uh, is important or is persuasive in this case. Again, it's the SECA test. It's inherently beneficial. The applicant comes to the board if they prove the SECA test with the positive criteria already being satisfied. Um, other than that, the applicant has made a number, a substantial number of commitments that could be reviewed at site plan if the applicant, uh, would of course, uh, at site plan would need to refer back to each and every one of these commitments made tonight, should the board be looking favorably upon the use variance. I would think that should the board look favorably upon this, that the conditions be stipulated tonight. Um, if the board is looking favorably, but I have nothing further to say with respect to the law, Mister Chairman.
Hey, board members, hearing all testimony and everything, what, what's a pleasure of the board?
Hello, Mister Chairman. I'd like to make a proposal here, you know, based upon everything we've heard, and we've heard a lot, and all the changes that were made. And with some of the specific things this evening that addressed our concerns last time with the dark windows and, um, and the talking about the, uh, behind the, the existing building with proper plantings and obviously with proper plantings between, you know, residential areas. And then, you know, going through and reducing the, uh, new building size to, to kind, to kind of get it more into conformity. Our, uh, little debate tonight about that existing building height and then Mister Pape saying that, that they are not going to pursue that at this time. And, uh, the proper lanes and the circulation on the property and the parking, all the stuff that was addressed with that. And obviously, you know, we still have to go through the site plan phase of all this. But based on all that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Mister Chairman, I'll second that.
Who is the second?
Mister Cantor.
Cantor, okay. Motion by Mister Hughes, seconded by Mister Cantor. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mister Cantor?
Great, I get to be first. Um, Mister Chairman, this is a very tough decision for obvious reasons and for neighbor, for, for neighborhood concerns. But, um, I believe that we are bound by the laws and by the fact that this is a use variance only and that significant changes have been committed for the, um, for the site plan. So with all that being said, I vote yes.
Mister Hughes?
I will echo Mister Cantor's, uh, comments he just said and, uh, say yes.
Mister Mertens?
Before I vote, um, this is for use, for, you know, variance. So I, I've listened to Mister Johnson and some of the concerns he brought up. I am also concerned about, but they will be addressed at the final site, um, hearing. So going forward, um, there's a lot of things that's going to have to be done for me to even go to the next step. But this step I do feel has been satisfied by our obligation as a board with the laws and from the testimony that, uh, we received. So I will vote yes on the use variance.
Mister Orozco?
Yep.
Mister Seah?
Board members, you know, I too in following suit with Mister Mertens, that, um, you know, I believe we met the legal test for the D-one variance. However, I'm still concerned with the moral and ethical, you know, aspect of all of this. This has to be Charlie, Jen, Sherry. It has to be utmost your priority to ensure that, you know, these residents are not impeded or impacted by the new building. And, um, with that, on the use variance only, you know, I vote yes.
Mister Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
This is a hard one for me. Number one, farm buffers. I don't vote for any variance in a farm buffer. That's number one. Number two is not having adequate setback. And I, you notice I didn't say buffer because they're giving us a buffer. But we don't have adequate setback. Side yard, front yard, backyard, we don't have adequate setback. Conforming. They need relief for those setbacks. What I would like to see done, i- i- the votes already carry, you know, in favor. But come site plan, I would like to see a site plan that is more in conformity having the setbacks, e- e- even if it's redesign or whatever they have to do. But bring this, you know, to where the conformity of the setbacks along with the buffers are met. You know, I, I really, really have to see that. And I, I know in our, our setbacks, we have burns. They, they can reduce the footage setback by putting a berm in, a planted berm and everything. It can reduce the size. It can reduce the size of the setback. So, you know, I'm going to vote no because of the farm land buffer. And I, I just, you know, that, that's it. But, you know, something's got to be done with the setbacks to also offset this building.
Motion carries.
Okay, good luck, Mr. Pate.
The, the hour is late and I'll be very brief, but Mr. Chairman and members of the board and board professionals, to each and every one of you, I thank you so much for the care that you placed in your decision. We will work very hard to satisfy all of the conditions that we've made a commitment to. To all, thank you and good night.
Thank you, sir. Okay, being late night, I, I want to welcome the new board members, people that's been reappointed and my, our professionals, our staff behind us, Matt, Eileen, thank y'all very much. I appreciate it. And can, do we have any further business?
Just, just want to mention that I will send out a list of meeting dates and the roster to everyone. If you would just look at the roster and make sure all the information under your name is correct. And if your phone number is listed as a home phone and it's a cell phone or vice versa, please let me know so I can update the roster. Thank you.
And then, Eileen, you're going to make sure Mr. Stanton has a township email address and so forth?
He already does. Took care of that.
He's been wonderfully accommodating. Thank you, Eileen.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, Mr. Stanton. Sorry, sorry, your first meeting took us
Tired, but very interesting.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mr. Hughes, seconded by Mr. Seiya. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, guys.